Julianne, are we ready? Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Welcome to this December 12, 2023 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Casada and Commissioner Benson will be appearing remotely via Zoom. Due to the length of the agenda and the number of discussion items, we plan to take a 20-minute recess at about 7:30. We'll start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that I will lead. Please join me. Please join me in the pledge. Thank you. We have announcements and additions to the agenda. Madam County Manager, are there any changes to or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, good evening. Yes, we have three. Item 3A, Joint Air Quality Control Board Ordinance Amendments to be added to the agenda as item 6C. Item 3B, Air Quality Control Working Group to be added to the agenda as item 6D. And lastly, item 3C, Alcohol Harms Alleviation Fund, added to the agenda as item 10F. And Madam Chair, a vote is required for the changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
I would like to request respectfully that we remove items 8C and 8D from the consent agenda for further consideration.
Thank you. Any other changes? Seeing no other changes, I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Madam County Clerk, we need to do roll call votes today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes, thank you. That is approved.
And Madam Chair, just for the record on the reorganizing of the agenda.
Thank you.
So item 8C will now become 11A. And item 8D will fall under adoption of resolution as item 10G.
10G, I'm sorry. 10G, you said, Julianne? Thank you. You're gonna have to stop me when we get there, I'm afraid. Okay, I have a couple of statements. I offer the following statement regarding the closed litigation meeting held Tuesday, December 12 at 3:30 PM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held today, December 12, were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
My second closed statement. I move that the Burnaleo County Attorney and County Manager be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, December 12, 2023, within the parameters set by this commission. Does that need to be moved and seconded as well, Julianne? Or is that?
Yes.
It's been moved, and do I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Olivas?
No.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes. Thank you. Item four on our agenda is Count on Us Minute. County Manager, Marcus Baca.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good evening, everybody. Good to see all of you. So one of the highlights that we get to present at the commission meetings is our Count on Us Minute. So we focused on our United Way campaign, and we're talking about all the great things that county staff does to contribute to the campaign. So Tia's gonna go ahead and show us a short video.
What do you want for Christmas this year?
I like a Nerf gun.
A Nerf gun?
Yeah.
It's the season of giving, and for years, staff at Burnco have taken the saying to heart.
Burnaleo County uses public funds to support many of the nonprofits. But if your giving of yourself and your time, it's just much more meaningful, and it's just kind of a personal investment in making our community a better place.
A lot of the pieces, too, I'm kind of like circulating.
Burnaleo County employees are on track to donate more than $60,000 to the United Way Community Fund through the end of the year.
So our United Way campaign for Burnaleo County kicks off in October, and it typically goes till the end of the month of December. During that timeframe, we give employees the opportunity to not only donate, but to jump in with many festivities.
Dozens of employees donate straight from their pocket through payroll deductions.
People have the opportunity to donate to different organizations along with it. Some of those could be based on education. It could be helping out families that may just be at a bad time in their life.
Yeah, so some of them are really cool.
While other employees are using their free time and talents to benefit the cause.
What we do is we like to make it fun. So one of the examples is the Holiday Mercado that we have. We have almost 20 employees that are sharing their talents, and they're making things, and they're selling their products.
One of those employees, Parks, Recreation and Open Space Director Debbie Jo Almaguer, raffled off this handmade afghan that took her 90 hours to put together.
I love to crochet, so I decided to crochet a sugar skull.
Her talents hang off, raising $1,620.
To me, like, if any time we can help somebody or any organization, then it makes me happy, too.
Parks, Recreation and Open Space also bringing in $245 with a coffee, hot chocolate and donut fundraiser. And that's not all. This year's Safe Trick or Treat event in front of Alvarado Square on Halloween and a holiday toy drive also played a major role.
We had over 450 people join us on Halloween for that event.
And with the donations, helped meet the needs of our citizens and even fellow employees through organizations like Laundry of Love, Cuidando los Niños and the ABC Community School Partnership.
The main thing is just realizing that you're helping someone else out that may not have the opportunities that we have. The socks that we wear, you'll never know how many kids go to school without socks. The toys that are helping out the kids in that little truck or that doll, that means the world to them. Along with that, just the funding that we're providing in general.
A public service to our community that goes far beyond the doors of Alvarado Square.
I just want to thank the staff for being so supportive and for just doing what we all do here at Burnaleo County. We always do the right thing, and I'm just really, really proud of the generosity of our county staff.
Thank you. Now we move on to item five, Proclamations. Let's see. Recognition of the BHI Subcommittee Members. Vice Chair Barboah, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm hopeful that a lot of these folks are in the actual room tonight. I just want to start by saying, you know, behavioral health is a big obligation of the city, of the county, and what we do. And we have had, since the behavioral health tax was implemented, we've had these subcommittees that have been serving volunteer time. Communities, community members have been putting their own time, energy and effort into our subcommittee. So I'm very honored to be able to recognize our subcommittee members for all that they've done over the years in their commitment and their volunteer time. This does not mean we don't have in place yet the new process for subcommittee members. So this does not mean that their committees are closed as of today. This means we wanted to recognize them and for all their time and service and commitment, and as we keep working towards a plan that will work for moving it to our future. So again, we are going to acknowledge, the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Behavioral Health Initiative Subcommittee Members. The Behavioral Health Initiative was launched nearly a decade ago in response to the findings of a task force comprised of elected officials, consumers, providers and other stakeholders who pointed out behavioral healthcare gaps, needs and priorities in Burnaleo County. In 2014, voters approved a 1/8% gross receipts tax to improve access to mental and behavioral healthcare services in Burnaleo County. The BHI has provided more than 60,000, to more than 60,000 clients since 2019. Today, we thank the members of the initiatives for subcommittees, those knowledge, whose knowledge and commitment have contributed to the development of numerous projects and strategies designed to assist or treat individuals in need. The Supportive Housing Committee's goal to ensure individuals with behavioral health needs are stably housed and seeing positive outcomes with the Family Wellness Shelter, the Tiny Home Village, a safe house for sex trafficking youth and Veterans Transitioning, Transition Living Services. The goal of the Prevention, Intervention and Harm Reduction Subcommittee is to prevent substance use and severe psychiatric distress through early identification and treatment. It has been achieved with numerous programs, including school-based mobile health services, Medicaid-assisted treatment, suicide prevention and community engagement teams. The Crisis Subcommittee's goal is to improve response to an individual in behavioral health crisis and link them to appropriate stabilization and recovery services while minimizing involvement of the criminal justice system. Its accomplishments include the Mobile Crisis Teams, the Care Campus and its many programs, the University of Mexico Healthcare Crisis Treatment Center and the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion. The Community Support Subcommittee's goals to improve service in the community that will stabilize individuals and prevent crisis has been met in many circumstances with programs, including the Resource Reentry Center, Peer Case Management, Senior Peer Supports and Forensic Assertive Community Treatment. The Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners congratulates each and every Subcommittee Member for jobs well done and extends our gratitude for their invaluable time, expertise, and for their steadfast commitment to improving behavioral health services in our community. I would like to name out all the committee members, and we do have individual certificates that Pam Acosta and Director Pam Acosta and Amber Salazar will be, or Pam Acosta will be handing out. Oh, and Amber, I do see. And I'll start, we'll go by each committee member, but be each committee. So the BHI Community Support Subcommittee Members, Patrick Barrett, Luis Blazquez, Deborah Doc Brock, Manny Crispin, Torrance Green, Lori Lavesic and Mika Tara. If there's folks online, I hope you received that. Let's give that Subcommittee a big round of applause. Thank you so much. That was our Community Support Subcommittee. Now I'll be reading off names of our Behavioral Health Initiative Crisis Subcommittee Members. Bill Dorman, Buck Sanchez, Cynthia Sontag, Betty Witten. Thank you. Thank you for your service. And then the Supportive Housing Subcommittee, Laura Carlisle, Bob Edgar, Anthony Harkness, Jocelyn Huffmaster, Vanessa Kuhn, Mariah Mahoney, Jim Marshall, Lauren Nguyen, Laura Norman, Michael Barndaller, Mark Walsh. And last, but definitely not least, is our Prevention, Intervention and Harm Reduction Subcommittee, Members Roddy, Robert Bailey, Michael Buchanan, Mark Burton, James Jones, Catherine Reeves and Breann Rocha. So, and thank you so much again, too. And I welcome any of my colleagues on the diocese or online to say some thankful words for our Subcommittee Members. We are so glad to recognize your hard work.
Did you want them to come up for a picture, Tia? And as for coming up, I just wanted to extend my deep, deep heartfelt thank you for your work, your volunteerism, your professionalism. We really could not do any of this without you all, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Yay, good. Thank you.
Second proclamation, 5B County Manager to present. Some time, I'm sorry. We wanted to take some time to acknowledge Enrico Grati. As most of everyone, everyone in this room knows, he's retiring. And I think he retired yesterday, and I asked, I had to beg him to come for his acknowledgement because that's how Enrico is. He doesn't want the credit for anything. So, Enrico, you want to come up? So everyone can see you.
He's getting one of big things, I'm making it.
Yes. So I'll read it really quickly. Acknowledging that Enrico Grati began his career with Burnaleo County in 1998 as a graduate student intern and joined the county's ranks as a program planner in February of 1999. And acknowledging that as a New Mexico and Albuquerque native, Enrico always led with a sense of pride for his community and a genuine desire to improve the place he calls home. And acknowledging that during his tenure with the county, Enrico has been a leader in the land use and development community, shepherding many important county projects to fruition, including the Southwest Area Plan, the Isleta Boulevard and Village Center Sector Development Plan, the Bridge Boulevard Village Center and Corridor Plan, the International Sunport Station Area Plan and the West Central Sector Development Plan. And acknowledging Enrico's assistance to countless individuals, including myself, in navigating the county's entitlement process and helping the equal number of local businesses get established. And acknowledging Enrico for being instrumental for implementing Burnaleo County's Property Nuisance Abatement Ordinance, which allows the county to remove blighted structures in the community. And acknowledging Enrico's service in various roles with the county, including Planner, Community Development Manager, Director of Planning and Development Services, and most recently, as the Deputy County Manager for Community Services. And the intense focus and steadfast work ethic he brought to each of these positions. And acknowledging Enrico for spearheading and participating in the county staff community cleanup initiative. Every month, a group of county employees chooses a public space, including areas in the bosque, medians and alleyways to pick up litter and spruce up the place. The initiative started with Planning and Development Services and Parks and Recreation and Open Space, and now has spread to other departments, which helps beautify our community. I think we all can attest, we see Enrico coming in, getting ready for a meeting, and he's just helped his staff clean an area. I mean, does it without hesitation, and I really admire him for that. Acknowledging Enrico's contributions in bringing the county to its current level of professional proudness and that his presence will be greatly missed by his colleagues and the public we serve. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners congratulates Enrico Grati for an amazing career and extends its best wishes for a wonderful retirement. Congratulations, Enrico.
God, can you hear me? Can you hear me? I just want to say thank you to everybody that I've worked with over the years, and it's been a few years, and this feels slightly surreal. But I am very thankful and a lot of gratitude to everybody that I've worked with. I have an outstanding set of colleagues that I've worked with over the years. I've had a great opportunity to work with all the different departments in my recent assignment to try to improve our services, our community engagement, and position the county to be at the forefront for new, interesting and very helpful development for the future, and I feel really good about that. And I just really want to thank my boss. She's helped me so much. I can't describe it. And that's about all I have before I break up here, but thank you all very much.
Madam Chair.
Before you come up, I wanted to say something, and I'm sure the others do as well. But, Enrico, it has been such a pleasure to work with you. Unfortunately, it's just, in this capacity, it's only been one year, but I've worked with you in the past when I was at the city and with different planning opportunities. But the one thing I will say is not only you're a professional and just this consummate professional, you're a mentor, and you have taught what you know to so many, and your gift will keep on giving to the county, so thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm not moving, so hopefully I can be of assistance in the future. But this is a very difficult decision for me, but one that I feel like I had to make at this point for a lot of reasons. But I just want to ensure that I've enjoyed. This whole experience has been just phenomenal for me, and I've been very blessed to, like, have walked in the door and, you know, had an internship handed to me, so. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Again, it's been such a brief time getting to serve alongside you, but really, it's just been an incredible pleasure. And from our first interactions, you know, as Madam Chair said, you've been somebody that's a mentor, an educator, really diving into these complex subjects and sharing your wealth of experience and your knowledge and your passion for making our community a better place. And it shows. It shows in the people that you've hired, the department that you've built and the culture that you've maintained there. So I just feel really lucky to have gotten to know you a little bit and work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to give it quick, but I just want to appreciate you for all the same reasons. I think County Manager's explanations of your professionalism and true-to-earth grit and just community. You were the first to really make me feel welcomed here. You're so accessible. I just, you definitely feel like a mentor to me, and I just thank you so much for all of your service.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, Enrico, you're my friend. We became good friends with all the work that I had to do in my district, and you helped me navigate for so many of my constituents. We've done huge projects that I think will last forever. From all the things that you helped me navigate, from figuring out how I do open space and working with staff and how to navigate that. From, you know, economic development to infrastructure needs. I mean, there's not nothing that you don't have knowledge on or know how to navigate. And you're a huge, huge loss to the county and somebody's great, great gain. But, hey, we all have our journey. I wish you all the best in your journey, my friend. And, yeah, dinner's on me next time.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
I can't add anything that hasn't already been said, Enrico, but I do want to say that I'm gonna miss you. I consider you a friend, an amazing colleague, but also a friend. And this is Burnaleo County's loss. And honestly, without the headaches, probably your gain. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thanks. You want to come up for a photo?
All right, just keep on smiling. Thank you.
So now we move on. Item six is Public Comment and Communications. But before we hear the public comment, we'll hear the communications, item 6A through C. And then we have item 6D for a vote. But County Manager, Behavioral Health Systems Implementation Plan. There we go.
Good evening, Madam Chairs and Members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update today on the Behavioral Health Implementation Plan at Burnaleo County. My name's Bryce Pittenger. I'm a behavioral health consultant, and this is my partner, Kate Gibbons. So first and foremost, I want to just acknowledge all the work that the folks within the county have done over the last couple of months. It's been extensive. They all have jobs, and they have done a ton more. A lot has gotten sort of put in front of them, a lot of decisions to be made, and they've been lockstep along the way. So just real briefly, I know you have a tight agenda for this evening. The agenda for this particular presentation is a progress update on the BHI Work Group Recommendations Overview of the Division of Behavioral Health Services. Recommendations, overview of the Division of Behavioral Health Services, spoiler alert, and the new organizational structure, overview of our concept of involving public ideas and participation and applications for boards and council, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps, and we hope to make this update something that we do on a regular basis with you all, and we will also do monthly. So the BHI Work Group Recommendations, just really quick, on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see that there were six recommendations, so I'm just going to go over them really briefly. So, and the BHI Work Group was commissioned by you all to just kind of look at what do we need to do to really build a system of care within Burnley County and shore up what we have in order for us to be able to grow. So the six recommendations were to build a genuine system of care, to restructure the BHI, and that's the Behavioral Health Initiative, to invest in a robust data structure, increase available funding for Behavioral Health Services in Burnley County, funding streams, and support development of supportive housing across the continuum of care, and then improve coordination with MDC in conjunction with UNMH. So that is what we were tasked with. And if you remember the house model that we presented to you all last time, it is like building a house when you're creating infrastructure that hasn't been there, and so I'm going to carry that metaphor through as we look at this. So with regards to build a genuine system of care, what have we done the last couple of months since we've seen you, and what have the folks at county done? We've met multiple times and presented different organizational areas. We've had multiple meetings with internal leadership and external stakeholders. We've reviewed all the current processes, all the statutes, all the authority, and had multiple demos with vendors for data solutions. And if you remember last time, we talked about data solutions being a portal, a unified resource portal for all of us, for the entire county. And then we also talked about financial transparency or administrative services organization, and I'll give an update on that as well. So we are partnering with City on the closed-loop referral, Unites Us and the data system, and the creation and vetting of a new internal structure. And obviously, this is necessary as we start, before we start to build our external structure with stakeholders. External structure's already there, but in order to pull in the right folks to the table, we need to have a good table. And we presented all of these updates to the subcommittees in the BHI Work Group the other day to get their feedback, and we did incorporate some of that feedback. On the right-hand side, you can just see what the busy folks at Burnley County have been up to, and I think that was nicely acknowledged with the work groups today. So the infrastructure, restructuring the BHI. So here's the progress to date, really short and sweet. There's an internal decision that has been made to create a Division of Behavioral Health Services. This will include the Care Campus, the Office of Criminal Justice, and Behavioral Health Initiatives. So folks know that this has been nested within the Division of Public Safety and Health, and the recommendation is to pull it out and to create and align behavioral health throughout county, and I'll get to a little bit more of that. An internal decision to hire a contract, possibly FT, but probably contract is all that's needed at this point, medical director. And I'll talk about the necessity for that in a little bit, but in order to become a player and a Medicaid provider with all of the things that you all have going on in terms of collecting data and providing services, we believe a medical director will help both interface with some of your stakeholders, like UNM and the state and the managed care organizations, and also provide a lot of value. The other is to hire a special projects coordinator, that's a catch-all term for a position under the deputy county manager, that will help organize all the internal and external boards and meetings and plans to align. So I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a minute. And then we looked at the development of board and committee formation, and we've made some decisions, both the function and the process of how that work, and the development of public and community participation, or the enhancement of it, you obviously already had it, and the development of a new organizational structure. So here's the new structure, the proposed structure. So you can see here, County Manager, fearless leader, the Deputy County Manager of the Division of Behavioral Health Services underneath. Off to the side, you have the Special Projects Coordinator, coordinating all the boards and councils and internal and external stakeholder meetings, and you have the Medical Director. And then you have Care Campus and the Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiative under the Deputy County Manager of the Division of Behavioral Health. So I think it goes without saying that the Care Campus provides the direct services and the contracted services through the CJBHI include 46 behavioral health providers and have over 60 contracts, the Source and Reentry Center and the Tiny Home Village. So boards and commissions, deep dive into all the boards and commissions that you have here and all the opportunities within county, again, to find behavioral health in any of its forms, including prevention and promotion, and lift it up and align it. So here you have a recommendation that the DCM of both the, of all, the DCM and the Special Projects Coordinator would convene these collective boards annually. And some of this is to be able, for informational exchange, and some of this is to be able to, again, align efforts and promotion even within your organizational structure. So you see on the left, the advisory boards, and there's two in red, the Community Advisory Committee. We thought this reflected more of what we were looking for. In the BHI Work Group Recommendation, it was called the Behavioral Health Advisory Council. We believe that the Community Advisory Committee sort of reflects a little bit more of what we're wanting, which is that community input in that particular process and that particular committee. And then the Lived Experience Committee, this is also new. And so this is a proposed committee, advisory in nature, that would be made up of folks that have utilized our systems, so they can help us understand where those transitions of care aren't working, where those access points, where those doors are closed. And it's actually, in terms of if you look both nationally and even internationally, it's becoming how people start to do business, is look at their consumers and the people that they serve in any sector and get their input. So that's another recommendation. And then you have the authorities, you all, of course, and the MDC Healthcare Authority. So it's an unfortunate time to meet Enrico, but one of the sweet spots here within the county structure is that the Community Service Division has community centers, senior services, community schools, parks and rec. I was a parks and rec kid, went every single day after school, housing programs. And so all of these, we see as potential promotional hubs. And so the recommendation is that the Deputy County Managers of both divisions meet with the County Manager to map access, data sources, services, and opportunities. The idea is not to create necessarily a case manager at our community centers to do intakes, could be, who knows down the road, that could be a possibility, but the idea is to utilize those as promotional access points to get our message out. And then beautifully, your Public Information Office is also within the Community Service Division and did a fabulous job on that little video today. So align housing alternatives. Housing is already a big player within, you know, all of the leadership meetings within the current Department of Behavioral Health, but now the new Division of Behavioral Health Services. And one of the BHI recommendations was to align housing across the continuum, and we see this as a potential way to continue to do that. And then include the Community Services Division representative in quarterly internal convenings. Invest in a robust data structure. This is another recommendation of the BHI Work Group. So what have we done? So Burnley County and City of Albuquerque engaged in thorough researching of the Unified Resource Portal, meaning Unites Us, which at this point, there's a willingness on both parties to go in together to purchase that. And it makes a ton of sense, because the Unites Portal will upload all of that provider information and detail, including food banks, including housing, including behavioral health providers, all the aspects of our social service and the system that serves the people that we care about here. And so going in with City and being really careful about what exactly we're purchasing in terms of that platform and what aspects we want to purchase, and passing the sniff test whether or not we feel that it's secure enough, and executing that decision hopefully pretty soon. So meetings with vendors for, the Unites talked about that. We met with a vendor for the Financial Payer and Data Solutions, they're called Falling Colors, they're the administrative services organization for the state. We are still sort of evaluating whether or not we need an ASO, which would create a little bit additional cost, it would increase fiscal transparency and data collection, but it would cost. And so we're still evaluating whether it's our recommendation to you, and not just us, but the members of our team, obviously, whether it's our recommendation to you to go with this other data solution as well. And then we met with RS21 and saw the wonderful things they're doing with the network mapping, starting with the DA's office. We're not ready for them, they're not ready for us, we need to be able to have a data governance secure enough that we can decide what those metrics are. And under, you know, the auspices of the folks with substance use disorder as a protected class of people, we have to be very careful, and we have to proceed carefully, and that's what I believe we're doing. But down the road, you know, the network mapping that RS21, it could be something useful. And it also could be case-based, so case-use-based, so that's something that we can talk about as well. Increase funding for Behavioral Health Services. So since I last saw you, there hasn't been anything that we've done specifically, I can't say that we've brought in additional funds, but we have mapped all of the opportunities. And so we've mapped opportunities at the state with the specials and the capital outlay. And then I just want to talk really briefly about the opioid allowable uses related to behavioral, I know this body is doing a fabulous job of coordinating with City on this, and navigation models, which is just very briefly, if we have a person that's calling in for, you know, there's a short window with substance use disorder, when you're ready to get help, you're ready to get help, and we better be there to pick up the phone. And so a navigation model would be a sort of a hub and spoke, that there could be an individual that would be available to somebody that needs those services until they get into those services. So they would literally stay on the phone with them in some cases. So that would be, you know, that would help folks with special needs navigate that system and take that opportunity, that first opportunity that they, when they want it, we need to get it to them, folks. The supportive housing is also an allowable use, as we heard in the last commission meeting with your attorney, who did a fabulous job of presenting all that surrounding the opioid epidemic, and then expanding medication-assisted treatment and behavioral health best practice associated. So that means all of our services that we've got mapped, we've got prescribers, but we don't have treatment, we can use that money to build the infrastructure for treatment, and then it's payable sustainably by Medicaid. And then medication-assisted treatment and behavioral health in correction. So those are some of the allowable uses for funding, and happy to link you with any other resources that you might need in making some of those decisions moving forward. Another recommendation was improving coordination with MDC and UNM. What have we done? We've met with UNM regarding barriers to data exchange, and we've come up with some next steps. We toured the fabulous Resource and Reentry Center and the CARES Campus, and I think Sarah Spain and Kate and I had a fabulous conversation in that lobby and said, we need more touchpoints. After folks leave and they can't come back in, we need some more touchpoints to be able to say, you know, for this navigation back into the community, this pivotal transition point for those folks to work. But it's Fabulous Resource Center, as you know, and the CARES Campus. And so as I spoke about earlier, the Medical Director would help provide and facilitate the inclusion of the quality and data governance. So I can get more into detail about that if you want to, but again, I know you have a tight agenda. Public participation. So community input, as in this meeting, public comment at public meetings is also welcome, thank goodness. I worked in state government for 10 years, that was always my favorite part of our public meetings. And so what we're looking at is, right now, Burnley County has a portal, and the ATAB or the Addiction Treatment Advisory Board is the only one that actually is officially in that portal right now through application and posting vacancies. And so the recommendation that's been accepted is that the applications, at this point, is placeholder, will go through the Division of Behavioral Health for these new, for the new Community Advisory Committee and the Lived Experience Committee. As a placeholder, they'll go through the Division of Behavioral Health right now, but we're hoping to open the portal to them so we can manage all of it in one process. So everybody goes to the portal if they're interested in being on one of our subcommittees or being helpful to us and being helpful to the community. And so I'll talk a little bit more about the Ideas Portal, and then the, let's see, yeah, the Ideas Portal moving forward. So this was something beautiful that came out, Chief President here, some of, a lot of this was his idea. Sorry, he is here, he is here. Sorry, he didn't want me to say that. So the idea is, an idea comes in from somebody in our community, right? It could be somebody in nonprofit, it could be somebody in city, state government, courts, APS, citizens, doesn't matter. An idea comes in, and we want those ideas, right? We want those ideas. So the ideas will go to the BHI team, so within the Division of Behavioral Health, it'll go to the team, and then be routed to the Community Advisory Committee. They will review that, and if it needs a little refinement, they'll send it back to the idea person for refinement. If not, it would move on through the Special Projects Coordinator and the Deputy County Manager to the County Manager and to you all. And so again, this piece is still a little bit in process, so we welcome your ideas. The application process for the Community Advisory Committee. So again, we want to streamline things, and we want people to have a similar experience of onboarding, so when they get to your committees, they know what they're doing, and these folks obviously do, they're committed individuals. So the interested person fills out an application in the portal, goes to the Division of Behavioral Health Services, they vet, and that includes ensuring that there's no conflict, and that there's the appropriate level of experience that that person has, and they make the final decision, yes, this person would be fabulous on this particular committee. And then it gets, you all would, you know, would be informed, there's an email to the Commission to inform. And then if the applicant accepts the appointment, then they would have formal orientation and onboarding, both by the Division, one person, and by the Chair of the group. So the Division, Robert's Rules of Order, all the things to expect, sort of time limited, all the things that we're looking at aligning across the board. Next quarter, so when we, hopefully, if you have us back, we would like to present to you again, and we've got pretty, we've actually got pokers in all these fires right now, so all these things are in motion, but we hope to present to you next time on the finalizing of the organizational structure, including the positions and the job descriptions, which we've already started working on. The continuous quality improvement, we chose that for a purpose, the continuous quality improvement and learning formation and codification. And so you all, Commission Pivot, and I don't know if it came through your Commission, if it came through the Division of Behavioral Health Services, and they're here in the room, Curtis and his team, if you want to just give a wave, they did a fabulous evaluation, if you wanted, I consented to you, and they had some great recommendations in terms of organizing your quality, you know, your quality approach. We don't necessarily need all these new positions and peoples yet, we just need a unified approach, and we need everybody to be on the same page. And so they've got some fabulous ideas, and the quality model you see on the right-hand side is in development, and it's from Dr. Kate Gibbons, and she can talk a little bit, it's developed specifically for county, she can talk a little bit about that, but we hope to finalize that. And then the service model, we talked to you all about that in terms of the navigation, made a ton of progress with Leah Temmel, with some of the folks from Department of Health, and some of the folks from UNM, have had about four or five meetings, and they've made some recommendations in terms of, this is maybe how we could look at navigating people through our system of care. So we hope to report to you on that next time as well. And then the screen, that we talked about unifying the screen at all access points, both for quality of care in terms of meeting those social determinants of health and the basic needs of folks at the get-go, and data collection. And then, again, we hope to have a final on the Unites Us, you know, effort with City of Albuquerque and with you all. Thank you so much again for your time today, and happy to stand for any questions if you think that's a good idea, and I know there's County Managers next, so. And I know there's, County Manager is next, so.
Yes, sorry, Kate. So I'm going to make just a quick concluding comment about system change and that, like building a house and designing a house, it takes time. Otherwise, you have problems down the road. In the context of a complex system, we've made a lot of progress in a short period of time. We've had strong leadership from Madam County Manager that has opened up the way for us to have access to whomever we've needed. We have a very strong voice in Chief Perez in grounding and anchoring the system and the voice and the experience of the persons needing services and seeking services. That then has opened up discourse, dialogue, accountability and transparency to build, rebuild this system around that anchor. And that's what you're seeing today. And I want you to know also, we're going to, by the end of the month, we will produce a narrative with a sequence of decision-making points and then recommendations for 2024.
Thank you. Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you. And I will try not to take too much because I, so much. I will love a follow-up. I talked to Julianne already about maybe meeting with you guys. But this is great. Thank you so much. I think there's a lot of good work here, especially those internal pieces that I just need, that needed to somebody to pay attention to, dig in and be able to see the whole picture. And then thank you, County Manager, for making sure that they had access to whatever they needed. I just, I'm grateful. The couple of questions I had was in your diagram of sort of the different pieces that fall under, included MDC and others. And I heard you mention about tiny homes and the Resource Reentry Center. Maybe that's under the Avis, under the Criminal Justice Behavioral Health? Or maybe it's the one before. But the, the only thing I didn't hear was the crisis stabilization. That's not yet completed. But I'm assuming we should be thinking about it in this, in this sense. Hopefully, it'll be open soon.
Yes, Madam Chairs, if I can lean on my folks here. Maybe Pam Acosta to speak about that. Is that okay? Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, thank you. So the Crisis Triage Center is in partnership with the Department of Behavioral Health.
You were the best by far. He's the only one who could understand, to hear. Yeah.
Maybe mute yourselves.
I was waiting to see if they said something bad.
So it is in partnership with the Department of Behavioral Health at CARES Campus. And so that is a reflection. They are working together so that they're very heavily involved in that project. I know that our crisis subcommittee is also in communications with UNM Hospital on the Crisis Triage Center. They've been consulting with them as well.
And just that it's included in the future of it or whatever. And just quickly, sorry, I heard you mention about a medical director. I believe we have a medical director at the CARES Campus. This would be an additional medical director.
Medical Chairs.
Umbrella.
Yes, ma'am. And so you do have a medical director from UNM who's your provider at CARES Campus. This would be a medical director that would have your best interests, not that UNM doesn't, but that would have your best interest and be able to work with UNM on issues like getting data from the MDC contract to understand what's happening. And, and I do believe as well that the Deputy County Manager position is pretty stacked in terms of experience. And it may be actually more useful as we split some of this out in terms of what this medical director would do. It may look a little more doable to likely candidates.
Awesome, makes sense. And I, I have a lot that I want to just, I'm excited about the progress. The last two things I want to say is that I'm very thankful for the evaluators being involved and helping think so. I think I talked to Kurt and others earlier in the year and like sort of having goals that we can, that all, all programs and all departments are pointing to, like our North Star. So I'm excited. And for me, that aligns with like community values that we're pointing towards. So thank you for that. And last, I just want to say about the portal. I know it exists. I'm really glad, and I was sharing with Julianne that, for me, I think that idea of a portal where all things can come into, I just want to make sure it's, it's like official, right? Because what I've heard, and I don't, I'm not going to say that this is true, what I've heard third-party, and even when I was first coming in and from the previous commissioner sat in my seat, was that there was an Ideas Portal and sometimes things might get in there and maybe never be followed up on. Or maybe they were, but they weren't communicated back to the people who put them in there, whatever. I don't know if that's even true. It's all rumors I heard. But I just want to make sure if we're going to set up a portal, that it has a function that's official, that our very capable staff is, you know, duty to take after and follow up with.
I'm going to just add, Madam Chairs, is that we have also built out in the system multiple ways to gather input over time so that the Ideas Portal is one way. You know, every time I get a mailer about who I should vote for, it made me think, oh, we should be sending out mailers as well. And that we keep also accessing existing platforms and forums where a person's voice could come in, such as public comment.
Thank you. That'll be all. But thank you so much.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two just really comments at this point, I think. I just want to emphasize how important it is. The system is, to me, the key recommendation that I got from the working group that this commission set forth was we have to focus on the importance of building a system, a holistic system that integrates, in particular, all of the disparate providers, the nonprofits, the private sector operators. The city is a huge one, UNMH. Our own county operations are really just a, I don't want to say a small piece, but they're a fraction of that, right, of the whole. And where I think we really have a leadership role to play is in building that system, right? Not in being the, being everything to everyone all the time. It's in being that coordinator, taking that leadership role, but not necessarily doing everything, but doing that well, doing that coordination really well. And so I, I want to just emphasize, you know, the clock is ticking and nearly getting close to a year ago, we started this working group. And, you know, we're, we're still working on, on moving that forward. But I really don't want to see this become another book on the shelf. We have a few of those. We have the Via Positiva. We have the Business Plan. We have the Draft Strategic Plan, a couple of versions of that. And now we have this. And I, I want to see how those are building on each other. There's, there's a lot of good things in, in all of those that, that need to play into, again, building that system. And I, I think this is on the right track, but I'm always concerned that, that this has been a really difficult area for everyone. This is not unique to the county or our region. But in, in using all those resources and actually getting to the, the recommendations and building those out. And lastly, the, the key piece of that, that I think this commission made a big priority and we set it in our budget last year, was this Deputy County Manager position. And I implore our county manager, our leadership team, that, that that has got to be a huge priority because, you know, we made this commitment in our budget last year that, that this was a priority. And it's not to say we don't have leaders in the room. Chief Perez, Pam Acosta, we have, and many, and many more, including our county manager. But this is such a huge issue and such, it's so complex that, that no one person can do this alone. And we really need someone that, that is dedicated to that system-level approach and not focused solely on managing the CARES Campus or, you know, managing the contracts. Those are all part of it. But it's really that systems-level approach and that position is absolutely critical. And I just want to reemphasize my, my total support for that and that we have got to get that position staffed. And we've got to get a great person in there to, to really lead this forward. Not that you all can't do it or won't do it, but it is so important.
It's not our role.
Thank you. Madam Chairs, I don't have anything that I disagree with. I think that the, or I agree with all of it. It is about the system. Absolutely.
And I'd like to just add that the guiding question for this continuous quality improvement or continuous improvement is how will you know the system's functioning in a way that matches the vision, the values and the comprehensiveness that you need? And that's at the root of guiding a process that links back constantly to those questions with data and with evaluation.
Very good. That is extremely important. That's very important to me. You know, we need to be, not only have the right staff and the right system in order, but we need to be accountable to our taxpayer. We need to make sure that we know that this money is going for what it was intended. And I'm very encouraged by this, but, not but, am. Let's move it. Let's keep going. Thank you.
Just, I heard you talk about, because on the increased funding part, which is you didn't talk about Medicaid billing, which I believe is part of the work you all have been doing as well.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairs, I lean on my Director Pam Acosta here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. So Medicaid third-party billing is a really big part of this piece. We recently presented to some legislators and brought it to their attention as well to get that support. We're really garnering for that state support to develop the, that third-party biller, not only the biller who can do the billing for either small providers, but also the training simultaneously so that they can then begin to see that revenue and hire their own Medicaid biller. If the state is not willing to pony up, the BHI is ready and stand, on standby to start to at least pilot the effort here in Burnley County and set that example for the rest of the state. But it is something that's critical as we ask our providers to become self-sustaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your thorough presentation. I appreciate that. We'll move on now to item 6B. And I want to say something real quickly as a, by way of an introduction on the next three items, 6B, C and D. This is about our air quality and our Joint City-County Air Quality Control Board. And I just needed to preface our presentation with, you know, environmental regulations are developed for the protection of our residents and our children and our next generation. They need to be fair and equitable and in my opinion, must take into consideration overburdened communities. Regulations must be consistent and clear so that they can be followed by industry and monitored to allow for sustainable growth and development. And so we have consistency for the community. And with all of that said, I believe in our City-County Joint Air Quality Control Board. I thank them for continuing the very important public hearings that were held this past week. I participated by Zoom and observed. And these are volunteers with great expertise that ran a very professional, orderly proceeding. And I think that they have come up with a conclusion at 8:15 yesterday evening. And so I thank them for their hard and arduous challenge. But I want to say that this board is asked to help our community by promulgating regulations and rules because of the Clean Air Act, the environmental planning, excuse me, the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, and our state statutes, which created the possibility for the city and county to appoint this board. So just, we have invited the leadership of the Air Quality Control Board here a month ago, before some of this divisive language was, was moving forward. But we wanted to have factual information provided to us. So these first two items are really items of discussion. And I'd like to bring them forward. And the second item is our ordinance. I wanted to place our County Joint Air Quality Control Board ordinance in the public view. So it is connected via link to this agenda. And I would, I would ask the public to look at it and see exactly what it is that, that we're talking about here. And I will turn it over to the Air Quality Control Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Baca and Vice Chair Barbo and the rest of the commissioners. I appreciate the invitation to come here and explain the Air Quality Control Board. I also appreciate that I'm here for Enrico's retirement. I met Enrico in 2002. And he sat me down and kind of gave me the lay of the land up here in Burnley County. So it was very fun just to, to see the, the plaque given to him and, and his recognition of all the work he's done for the county. And also to see County Manager Baca as well. So with me, I have Chair Maxine Paul. And then on the other side is our Board Counsel. We have our own attorney that's paid for through a city contract. And this is Ms. Antoinette Sedia Lopez.
So I'm going to see, I don't know how to bring this up. I don't have a flash drive.
They have the AV folks in the back.
So just briefly, I was asked to prepare, or we were asked to prepare a presentation about five minutes. It's a very high-level overview. And as, as the chair mentioned, we are just getting off of a health equity, health environment equity impacts regulation hearing that we completed at about eight o'clock after our days were running about 11 to 12 hours a day for six days. So it was quite an undertaking and very, very emotional and very overwhelming as well, for me, anyway. You had asked about the role of our Joint Air Quality Control Board. Our, our two major roles are quasi-legislative. And so that's rulemaking, such as what happened last night with the, we'll call it the HEEI petition that was modified. And actually, we, we concluded with a rule. And then secondly, is quasi-judicial. So appeals, permit appeals come to us for decision or overturn of an environmental, for example, an environmental health department permit issuance. In our rulemaking, we may adopt amend or repeal an air quality rule or standard that's consistent with the Air Quality Control Act, which is a state statute that really delegates what we do or determines what we do and what we don't do. So that is the governing statute that allows us to, to basically do the rulemaking, provides us with all the regulations under the rulemaking as well as with the permit appeals and what the processes are for appealing that. The quasi-judicial is the board hearing these appeals, as I just mentioned. What's historically been the case for this board is that the local agency is the Environmental Health Department for the City of Albuquerque. And actually, the Director of the Environmental Health Department serves as support for the board. So we also have a board liaison that the city supports through their funding. The funding comes from the federal government largely and also from permit fees. So the authority for us to be here and to do our work is basically, again, predicated through the Air Quality Control Act. And basically, because we're a Class A county and because Albuquerque has a population larger than 100,000, we qualify as being able to create a local authority. And so essentially, our authority is very, it's parallel to what the Environmental Improvement Board authority is. There's, so there's not a lot of latitude in terms of our work versus the work of the Environmental Improvement Board, which also is to promulgate rules and to, to look at permit appeals. So again, it's, there's not a lot of leverage or creativity. It's pretty much straight down the line. Again, the, the appointment of a director, of the director performs for the local authority. And again, he provides, he or she provide the support the board needs. So again, with the, the Air Quality Control Board being similar to what the Environmental Improvement Board does, similarly, the ordinances at the city level and at the county level pretty much are also parallel with that. So I just wanted to kind of call that out because I think there's been some confusion about what the Air Board does and that we may be working outside of our boundaries. Those boundaries are very constricted. And they are, as I said, they're, they're basically come through the state and then the state actually receives their marching orders through the Clean Air Act. So again, our, our primary So again, our, our primary focus, as well as the Environmental Improvement Board, is to prevent or abate air pollution. And in doing that, we look at the environment as well as the health of our community. We also are responsible for a state implementation plan and, as well as other plans. So that, that comes before the board for approval or recommendations for changes. And a lot of that is coming from the Environmental Health Department up to us and then going through to the state. And then we also institute legal proceedings to come, to compel compliance with the Air Quality Control Act. And then, as I said, adopt regulations. So in the, in terms of rulemaking, I think there's also been some misunderstanding of what we can and can't do. We are obligated as, as a board of the state to follow the Open Meetings Act. So we can only make decisions, policy decisions, if there's a quorum of the board. We can have subcommittees of fewer than a quorum to do basically fact-finding. And then that is reported back to the board. We have stipulations on public notice as well as how the conduct of a hearing happens and how evidence is put into the record, as well as the public comment, period, expert witness testimony. It's a very formal process. It's not something that is, where are you going? And we have to abide by all of those. And finally, when the environmental, similar to the Environmental Improvement Board, the local board, which can be a county board or a city board or a joint board, as we have here, the people on that board, the board members, have several things they need to consider in passing a regulation. And these are listed here. It's the character and degree of injury or interference with health, welfare, visibility, and prosperity, or I'm sorry, property, not prosperity, the public interest, including the social and economic value of the sources and subjects of contaminants. And Albuquerque-Burnley County actually has a special provision, and this is something that's outside of the Environmental Improvement Board, that includes a consideration for environmental justice principles. And that was probably done back in, I want to say, 2010, maybe. It's been, it's been in our consideration of, of whether or not to approve a regulation for a number of years. And then finally, the technical practicality and economic reasonableness of reducing or limiting, limiting air contaminants from the sources involved. And I think, I guess that's all I have. I, I just wanted to also say a few other things about the makeup of the board. It is three appointed members by county commissions, commissioners, as well as four appointed members by the city council. We are a board that has tremendous expertise and professionalism. I have a public health, master's in public health, a master's in natural resource economics. I have, I was a medical policy director for Molina Healthcare after I retired from county government. And I've also worked with the State Environment Department. I've worked with the State Health Department as an epidemiologist. That's an example as well, and I'll let, I'll let Chair Paul talk about her expertise. But we are, I think, probably a board that has more expertise than I've seen since working at the county. And I'm very proud of that. Finally, I wanted to just talk a little bit also about what we've done recently. We passed a Clean Cars Rule in November. And that was actually a joint hearing with the Environmental Improvement Board and with a hearing, assigned hearing officer who had previously, who had previously done a lot of the hearings for the state. And then I just wanted to also say that the, the, the way that we function is just, again, I want to, I want to emphasize this. This is something that is very much, there is a rubric, there are regulations. If somebody has a complaint or a concern about a violation of the Open Meetings Act, ex parte communication, conflict of interest, the place to go is to the board to let us know and to show, you know, to inform the board of what that alleged violation is. Or, and after doing so, you can go to either the district court for the county that it occurred in, or you could go to the Attorney General's Office, which looks at boards and whether or not they're operating within the Open Meetings Act. So that's all I have to say. I'm going to go ahead and ask Chair Paul if she can give a few words.
Sure. Hi, folks. I'm Maxine Paul, and the Chair of the Albuquerque-Burnley County Air Quality Control Board, for now. Yeah, I, I mean, I think our Vice Chair gave a great presentation. I just want to say we're here for questions, if you have any. I will tell you that the, although the, it's still in the process of being finalized, the rule that was passed last night was a very limited rule, but it offered a new level of protection for overburdened communities. And we are proud that we've done this new and taken this important step in the direction of offering that extra level of protection when folks are extra burdened by air pollution. Yeah, so we're, I'm happy to answer questions. A little bit about me, just for your own information. I'm an environmental consultant. I work on climate solutions and mitigation and bringing funding to communities in New Mexico. And for seven years, I worked for the Pueblo of Santa Ana. I started an air quality program with treatment of the state, federal reference, methods of air monitoring, permit review, and did a whole bunch of different things. Clean up formerly used defense sites, Brownfield's work. And I also worked for the state as a major source permit writer for a brief stint about 10 years ago. But yeah, our board is incredibly qualified. We'll echo that. It's been, it's been an interesting ride the last month. But we have a, a climatologist, an atmospheric scientist from UNM on the board. We have a lawyer with an engineering degree. We have a environmental policy expert who's been working on environmental policy in the state for the last 15 years.
And is a lawyer?
And is a lawyer. Yes, we have. And then we have a... Yeah, that's right, a toxicologist who started an entire center at UNM. And I won't, I won't even try to do her incredible resume justice. Just works with overburdened communities across the state on environmental pollution. So yeah, I just, I, I'm very proud of the work this board has done and, and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Senator.
Well, it's an honor to work for this board. I, I have the contract to serve the board. And at first, it was just a little five, five-hour-a-week little, little job. And it's become incredibly difficult with, in the last, I guess, month, or maybe a little bit longer than a month, because of the interference in the board's work. I had to go to court and get a restraining order to try to protect. And that was my, my goal, was to protect the rulemaking that the, that the board has been doing. The petition to conduct the rulemaking was granted a year ago in December, and they just completed it. And that is just a petition. It doesn't even count all the work, the pre-petition work that went into it. I, it's an incredible honor to work for this, work for this board. They are amazing. And so I just was so upset to see them trashed like they were trashed because they didn't deserve that. And they're volunteers. And as you go forward and consider it, I think you should consider at least per diem for them because it really is an enormous amount of work. And they, they put in 11, 12 hours days. It was incredible to get this done. And again, I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Senator. I guess what I would say, the, the importance of you all being here. Again, we scheduled this before many of the excitement and, and I guess I would just have to say divisive comments in the, in the community. And I'm very saddened by that because what we want to do is work together with our partners at the city. We have parallel ordinances that have been in effect since 1994, which created this Joint Albuquerque-Burnley County Air Quality Control Board. And we stand ready to continue in that vein because I think it is, is an extremely important function that, that we as a county have. And so thank you again for, for being here. And I'll open it for any questions that other commissioners have. Commissioner, leave us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank our, our Board Chair, Vice Chair, and, and your legal counsel for being here tonight and really just educating us on this. And the, the first question I have for you is, were you ever, you know, the, the city came up with, Counselor Lewis came up with this proposal to amend the ordinance and make some changes. Nobody probably knows how the board operates better than you all. Were you ever consulted about those changes, brought into a conversation, a working group? No. Okay, very clear. And the, the other question along the lines of some of the things that were leveled, have any of the members of your board received formal reprimands? Or I'm not really, you know, I don't know your, your sort of complaint process, but formal reprimands or complaints or, or been removed for cause, for misconduct, that, that sort of thing?
No.
Very, very simple and, and easy to articulate responses. I, I appreciate that. And with that being said, I, I just want to say that I really want to apologize to you all for the way that you've been treated in the, in the public. I'm disappointed in, in members of my community and the lack of leadership at the city to really defend the work of this board and, and the work that you're doing on behalf of people across our community and outside of our community. Because air moves. Air is not restricted by anything. And you, you deserve much more than, than what you've been given from, from the city and frankly, from the county as well. Because I think that, that we really owe a more robust response. I, I think, obviously, we have not taken the side of the city in this, but I think that, that we owe a really robust response on this because you all have invested incredible amount of time and it's valuable time. Because it is very clear you all are not just do-gooders that, you know, are, are on a, on a mission here to, as some have said, destroy our community and, and, you know, do, do all of these terrible things. You're experts on this. You have a background in this. And when these charges have been leveled at you, that's incredibly unfair. And it's dangerous because we've seen other really dangerous politicians in our world make these kinds of completely baseless claims to, to rally individuals to their cause. And it's really dangerous. And, and I really hate to see that in our community and particularly on an issue as important as environmental protection and air quality. So I, I really think that, that we as a county need to stand strong with our Air Board. I, I believe that the city has illegally and unilaterally inserted itself into a rulemaking process, a lawful rulemaking process, for the purpose of interfering with that. But in doing so, have, have really violated the contractual provisions of a duly agreed-upon, longstanding, with great precedent ordinance that we both have. And I do think the county has shown some, some leadership and some real determination to, to take a more methodical approach than the city's approach, which didn't include you all, didn't include stakeholders in our community and took just a sledgehammer to something that may not have needed anything, but, but needs a scalpel. Need, if, if we're going to make changes here, if there are needs, like, for example, making sure our board members are taken care of when they're spending, you know, weeks of their personal time. Making those kinds of changes are things that, that we need to do methodically with, with great input, as you all did in your rulemaking process. And it, it's just an incredible disservice to our community, the, the comments that so many of our, our counselors, our Albuquerque Journal, you, you go down the list, just things that, that shouldn't have ever been said. And I just want to apologize to you all for, for that. And thank you for what you're doing for our community and in service of, of our air, of our future, of our now. And I don't believe that, that we have to believe this, this false argument that it's either jobs or the environment. That is the false equivalency that we have been sold for many, many years. And it has not panned out the way that it has been said. We can do both, and we need to do both, and we need to do better. And I appreciate all of your work.
Mr. Barbo.
Thank you. I just wanted to, one last comment, just on that same note, just to thank, thank you for your years of commitment, for your work, for sharing your expertise where maybe you shouldn't have to. But I, I appreciate it because I saw the slander that was given in the city council. And I just, it disgusts me, honestly, as someone who's also been under attack, including, you know, gun violence to my home. These kind of things can be the things that intimidate us. I think sometimes that's the purpose, is to just intimidate smart, brilliant people from doing good work, especially for our environment. So I just want to thank you for, New Mexicans are resilient, and you have been a model of that, that, and working through those long hours and really fighting for what's right for our community. So I just want to thank you and thank you for being a model. And I'm glad that my daughter and granddaughter get to see such brilliance, leading the way for, and our future generations. Thank you. So thank you.
I just want to really say thank you for your appreciation because just being sort of a victim of all the, the smear campaign. For me personally, I've never experienced anything even close to what I've just lived through for about a month and a half. And you really do become concerned about your own safety and that of your family. And you're trying to help and not getting paid for it. And then all of a sudden, you're getting attacked and your name is being smeared and the company you own is being smeared. And it's just incredibly difficult to, to go through and to have that resilience. So it's nice to really get this kind of appreciation and recognition. I, I truly do appreciate that.
Madam Chair Baca, Commissioner Olivas, and Commissioner Barbo, I just, just briefly want to say thank you so much for making the time to listen to us and to come to us and for everything you said. And I just want to note that our record stands for itself. If you look at the videos, if you read the notes, if you read the minutes, you can see a very, a board that has many different opinions, that is not extreme, that is, that found a, a very realistic, workable rule after a six-day hearing, despite the sort of cloud of politics. And so to, to anyone that would think that this is, that would believe the sort of hype or misinformation out there, look at the details, is what I'd like to say. And I think you'll find something that is government actually working. So I appreciate you all.
A question, Chair Paul. So for the public's edification, when will we be able to look at the results of that six-day hearing? I understand decision was made, but it, it'll be published so that people can understand what, what was...
It will. Let me let the counsel answer the question.
Yes, I'm working, currently working on the draft of the rule. And we have to file a statement of reasons. And then we have to have it published in the state register. Goes into effect, this rule was passed to go into effect in July of 2005. I mean, 2025. Where are we? Yeah. Wherever we are, 2025. So it's got a long timeline. And that was based on testimony by EHD of what kind of timeline they needed to implement it. And that testimony was very important. I am trying to get it out by tomorrow. It has to be signed before, unless we get a, unless we get a restraining order or preliminary injunction, it has to be signed before the ordinance terminating the city members' terms, including Chair, Chair Paul. And I've calculated that to be the 18th of December. And that's assuming, I'm not sure when they're publishing it at the, at the records office. But if they're publishing it, the records office, as soon as they could, it would be December 18th when it goes into, I mean, yeah, December 18th when it goes into effect.
And to be clear for everyone, you gave a year and a half for the community to, to comply and for the Environmental Health Department to provide the necessary information that was, has been requested by members attending the petitioners as well as those who objected to the petition. So it seems to me, just from a layman's point of view, that a fair hearing was had, that a compromise was made and that, that the community can look at that and, and see where we go from here. Is that fair?
I, I think that's absolutely true. The board's expertise, I don't think very many boards would have the com- The board's expertise, I don't think very many boards would have the capacity to do what they did in terms of synthesizing all of the technical information and listening very deeply to the community. I was in awe of this process. And before that, they had, the board offered an extensive hearing, or not hearing, meetings, pre-party meetings, so that the parties had an opportunity to provide input. Because normally, when EHD brings a rule, they do stakeholder outreach. Well, since this was brought by a community that hadn't been done, so, or we didn't, we weren't sure it was done. So the board, in its wisdom, offered that opportunity for all of the parties to meet. And I believe they met at least six times, perhaps more, with Richard Virtue, who actually is a trained media, trained hearing officer. And my understanding is the rule changed because of those meetings. Still, they didn't come to an agreement on it, but it was a rule that was in development for quite some time.
Thank you. And again, I would emphasize that the hearings continuing this past week and a day were extremely important for that deliberative process to occur. It was democracy in action, in my view. So thank you again for sticking with it and serving in that capacity. Any other comments? Thank you very much, we appreciate you being here. The next item is really, as I said, part of this discussion.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, who is that?
Thank you, Commissioner Benson.
Commissioner Benson.
Yeah, I did want to say, you know, I do acknowledge the air quality board's authority and their very impressive resumes. But democracy in action is what the city council did. They were voted by the constituents. And this council, this board, served at the pleasure of the Burnaleo County and the city council, Albuquerque City Council. And they ignored it, they ignored the vote to stop and to sit down. And so, you know, they might have legal authority to do so, we'll see. We'll see what the judge says. But they ignored the democratic process. So I just want to make that comment. And I think everybody agrees, we do need air quality. We have beautiful state, beautiful city. But we also need jobs and a vibrant economy. And there's many more aspects to consider. And so that's all I wanted to say, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your comment.
With all due respect, democracy in action is not immediate, I don't know, it's not, you don't, nothing happens immediately. There is a process for things to go into effect. And we followed the rules of what, when the first, the ordinance or the moratorium went into effect, and that was on Monday. And then the ordinance will go into effect five days after it's published in the state rules office. And then, at the end of that, there will be no city members of the board until February. So Burnaleo County will not be protected during those months and will not be regulated. And I think that raises very serious issues.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will move on, as I said...
Yes, Madam Chair, I will, I will respond.
Commissioner Benson.
There may be consequences to the city council's vote. That's not what's in question. Question is, they did vote by a supermajority. Seven out of nine members voted to overturn the mayor's veto. Why did the mayor veto in the first place? If you guys could ignore the city council's vote anyway, why did the mayor need to veto? Because he had the legal responsibility. And so then the city council came back and overrode that veto democratically. And yes, maybe you're correct, maybe there would be negative consequences legally to their vote. It was still a vote and they are answerable to their constituents who have elected them. If there was a recall on any one of them because their constituents disagreed with their vote, they wouldn't be able to ignore their constituents like you have. They would have to step down. If they were removed from office in an election, they would be required to step down. They wouldn't be able to ignore and say, well, there might be consequences. So with all due respect, you may be correct, there might be negative consequences, but it was still democracy and that's how it works. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson, for your opinion. I do want to remind everyone that as we started this discussion, it's emphasized that this is a joint City of Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Air Quality Control Board, which is a contract between the city and the county to move forward with parallel ordinances. And that is the fact that we are dealing with now, that the city changed their ordinance. So now we no longer have those parallel ordinances moving forward. And which is, brings me to the next item on our agenda, actually. And that is 8D, which is a proposal for an air quality control working group. And I guess, let me ask the Madam Clerk for an AR number first and then we can go into discussion and the reading of a floor amendment.
Yes, Madam Chair, for item 6D, the resolution number is AR 2023-127.
Thank you. And before I turn it over to the county attorney who is going to read this into the record, I move approval of a floor amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
And the purpose of this amendment, so this was published. And what we were proposing was a, again, a mirror resolution on the county side and on the city's side for taking a deep dive, taking a look at our air quality control board together to bring in the stakeholders. Unfortunately, on the city's side with all of this, it was not voted into effect. And so we are on our side now, having to look at what we do about this issue, this joint resolution that we really need to reach out and do some mediation. We really need to reach out to our stakeholders and our community to figure out how we move forward on this together. And the county has a responsibility here to take action today. So that is what the purpose of my amendment to this air quality control board resolution is. So do we read the amendment into the record first before we move on?
Madam Chair, that would be whatever you would prefer.
Yes, please.
But if you'd like it read, I can read it.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The original is published, this would be the amendments. We'll read them in full in the open meeting to comply with the act. And I'll read them now. If you look at page one, line two, you would delete the word "joint", and you would now go down to page one, line 13. After the word "pollution", add new words, "throughout" "Burnaleo County", and go to line 14, strike through the following words, "recognizing the differences within their jurisdictional geographic areas", that'd be a strike through. And new words on line 16, reading as follows. "Whereas the Burnaleo County Commission wishes to create a deliberative process to assess recent legislation passed by the city council as well as to evaluate this county's own ordinances to ensure that any legislation enacted balances the interests of all stakeholders." Then we would go down to line 22, strike through, after county commissioners, strike through the words "and", the city council of Albuquerque. Go down to line 26, after the words "quality control program", strike through the words "and identify any appropriate shared budget equally funded by city and county". Go down to line 30, and afterwards, "presentations by", add the words JAQCB and the city's environmental health department. And then strike through the words "and" the JACQB on line one of page two. Going further, after the word "to", you would strike through the words "the Albuquerque City Council and the", and then add the, in front of Burnaleo County Commission, and delete the word "meetings". And then go to item three, line five, delete the following language, "the mayor of the City of Albuquerque City Council and", and insert in lieu thereof "the", capital T, and then go to county commission. And after the word "appoint", the words "and", and delete the word "joint", so it would read "an air quality control board working group". And after "air quality control working group", on that line, add the words "to be staffed by the county attorney's office and", additional words. Then down, next line, on line eight, page two, subsection A, strike "voting", and add "ex officio". And then on line nine, strike through "two city council members appointed by council president". And on line 10, "two" becomes "one", and that would read "two county commissioners appointed by the commission chair". Line 11, strike through the word "the mayor of the City of Albuquerque or designee". Line 12, after "be", strike "non-voting". And then at the end of that line, strike the word "voting" and in lieu have "ex officio members". And you would go to line 14, on "as the basis", add the new language "shall include but not be limited to", and then strike "will be", add "the" and followings. Then you would go to line 16, new words, "two", "two representatives of the Burnaleo County government", line 17, "three", "two representatives of the City of Albuquerque government", line 18, strike through "two director of economic development from the City of Albuquerque or designee", strike through the word "designee" on line 19. Line 20, strike through "three director of environment health from the City of Albuquerque or designee". On line 22, "four", strike through "director of planning from the City of Albuquerque or designee". And line 23, "five", strike through "sustainability officer from the City of Albuquerque or designee". Twenty four, line 24, item six, strike through "economic development director of Burnaleo County or designee", and 25, "planning director of Burnaleo County or designee". And line 26, it would be "the New Mexico Environment Department", strike through the four eight. 27, "C", strike through "non-voting", and strike through "voting" at the end of that sentence and add "ex officio". And then on line 29, the end of that sentence, strike "will be as follows", and insert in lieu thereof "shall include but not be limited to the following". Then we would go down to line 39, sorry, 37. New words, "the county attorney may contract with outside legal or subject matter experts as needed to support the efforts of the working group", and then strike through the language "from either the county", "either the City of Albuquerque or Burnaleo County", just strike that language. And then we would go to the last page. And under line four, strike the words "both the city and". Line six, add the word "chair" with a capital C, strike "and the mayor". And then on line seven, strike the words "from the date of later signature". And Madam Chair, that includes all the amendments, they will be placed in context. And I believe this will be published in the format, so it's readable.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. And just to synopsize, what we are trying to do here is take seriously the responsibility that Burnaleo County has in protecting our air quality. And the way we read our ordinance and the way we understand the air quality regulations is that we need to do this. And so we are taking the driver's seat here, we are still putting a working group together, we are still reaching out to the City of Albuquerque to participate in this, but we will take the lead as staffed by our county attorney. So that is the explanation of all of that difficult-to-understand changes. Are there any questions or concerns? Commissioner Olivas.
Yes, as a co-sponsor of this resolution and amendment, I just wanted to sort of reiterate, our original desire here was to work with the City of Albuquerque, which just as we just heard from our air board members, they were never consulted about the changes that were made, neither were we. We learned about it at the same time that they did, that everyone did. And so really, we wanted to take a methodical approach, a thoughtful approach, and say, let's include the city from the start, let's include the air board, let's include the stakeholders from the beginning. If we're going to assert that there are issues with the way this board functions or with the way that the air permitting process works in our community, then we should start with a fact-finding process of experts and individuals that can articulate their concerns and address those concerns, determine if those are real legitimate issues, if they're supported in fact and sound evidence, and then work towards finding solutions to those articulated problems. Unfortunately, the City of Albuquerque did not agree with us on that approach and they voted down that joint resolution that we worked closely with Council Feebel-Cornon. And that was unfortunate. So now we're in a position where the city has unilaterally changed their ordinance and withdrawn from a legal contract with the county. And the county has approached them and said, let's talk about this. And they have, again, rejected that offer to meet and work together. So I think we have no other choice than to move forward individually with some inclusion of the city, saying that we do want their administration to put some representatives on this work group as advisory members to help the work group understand the issues that they're talking about. Because the city does run the air quality program, the health department itself. But I want to just very clearly state that this doesn't detract. This is the future, right? This is looking forward. How do we address the issues that are raised by both industry and community groups about the function of the board, whether those are true or not? And how do we address the concerns about air quality and enforcement and funding and all these other questions that really get to the meat of how we enforce regulations? This is, I believe, one way to address that. How do we look forward and find a solution that's mutually agreeable? But I want to say, in closing here, this does not preclude or in any way say that we are not going to pursue in tandem all possible options to really look at what is currently in place and making sure that we preserve and protect the current air quality of our community and the current structure of our board and our process. Because this is not the kind of thing that you can just turn off and turn it back on later. And this could be a very prolonged process to really understand the issues and come up with mutually agreed-upon solutions. So I think we have to do both. We have to protect the county's interests here and now in making sure that we have a functioning air board and air permitting process right now that the city has unilaterally, and I believe illegally, removed itself from. And we have to look forward, and that's what this resolution does.
Thank you. Before I move on, it's been moved by Commissioner Baca, the amendment, and segmented by Commissioner Olivas. Any other discussion?
No, thank you.
Any other discussion from afar? Okay, we will take a vote on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Benson?
Yes, excuse me.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kessada?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to just clarify my vote that it was something that I had put in my op-ed, asking for this to happen in a public way. So I think that us following through with what I'd put out in my op-ed, I'm very appreciative of that. And thank you for bringing this resolution forward so we can bring the two parties together to make sure that we are on the same page and we're moving the county and the city forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes. And now we move to the bill as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada?
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboah?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Very difficult issue, but I think that we have expressed how important it is to our community. Thank you. We will move on to public comment. And Julianne, how, how many members do we have?
Madam Chair, we have 11 signed up tonight.
11, okay, I think we can do that, and then we'll do a, a break after that. I will start by saying that each person has two minutes, and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. To maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect to everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Julianne, please call the names.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Ramona Goldsby, followed by Debbie Bach.
One of the worst evil sentences in the Bible, Proverbs 1324, he who spares the rod hates his son. How many white cops, brown cops, black cops who beat and murder people were beaten as kids by churchgoing parents who believed that damn evil sentence in the Bible? He who spares the rod hates his son. How many people in prison, how many alcoholics, how many heroin and meth addicts, how many wife beaters have scars on their bodies and horrific memories of parents beating them with straps, belts, yardsticks, tree branches? Many adults beaten as kids cannot show feelings of deep love and sorrow. They learn to cover up and bury their real feelings, to not give the adults who beat them the satisfaction of seeing their pain. Imagine if the Bible had said, the father and mother who give lots of strong affectionate hugs to both sons and daughters from birth to death, love them. With much help, adults terribly abused as kids can slowly heal. With much help, parents who beat their kids can wake up and apologize to their adult children and ask forgiveness. We can change. For most of us, forgiveness is not a one-time thing. We need to forgive ourselves and others whenever the awful memories come.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Ramona Goldsby, followed by Debbie Bach, followed by Joe Sackett.
Good evening, Chair Baca, Commissioners. My name is Ramona Goldsby. And as New Mexico emerges from 2023 and goes forward, what will we see? I want to say that I appreciate the qualifications and the time spent by the Air Quality Board. I wish people could sit down like adults and discuss issues. Because I believe that most people, when you get to the root of it, want the same thing. We want a healthy environment and a thriving community. Our vision of how we get there is different at times, but the important thing is to realize that we want the same goal. That means that both sides have to listen. My parents, amazing people, my parents told me that God gave you two ears and one mouth for a reason. So working together in unity, I think this will come full circle. But I do know that rules and limited government are better than over burdensome rules and crushing people, both financially and even spiritually, because of their beliefs. And as I always say, elections have consequences, and the public policy you see is part of that consequence. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsby.
May I close this laptop, or does that need to stay open? I can close it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Bach, that's spelled B-O-C-K. And I am a volunteer with Burnley County. I serve as the vice chair, all right, of the Burnley County Behavioral Health Initiative Community Supports Subcommittee. And I have a lovely certificate for you. Thank you. I want to talk about the new Behavioral Health Initiative Implementation Plan. And to give you some context, I grew up in Albuquerque, and then I was gone for 40 years. I lived in San Francisco, California, I lived in San Diego, California, I lived in New York City, and then I spent 20 years in Anchorage, Alaska. When I moved back to Albuquerque four years ago, I was really surprised by the high levels of homelessness, addiction, interpersonal violence. But when I reflected, it wasn't really any worse than any of the other large cities that I have lived in, or any other large city in America. We are a large community. What is different, the one thing, the problem, the problem that none of these other cities faced, was something that happened in 2014 in New Mexico. There was a direct assault on the behavioral health system statewide, carried out by the state government under the direction of our former governor, Susanna Martinez. Overnight, behavioral health agencies and service providers had their state funds frozen. Ostensibly, this was done to investigate fraud, but no evidence of intentional fraud was ever uncovered. Nevertheless, many excellent agencies closed their doors forever. Many private practitioners left the state. Vulnerable clients, adults, children, and families were left stranded. The current Behavioral Health Initiative Implementation Plan is an important step in a process of recovering from a devastating assault on the behavioral health system. Thank you for standing behind us.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsby.
Joe Sackett, followed by Victoria Martin, followed by Karen Caffey.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, my name is Joe Sackett. I am a citizen of Burnley County. I want to thank you for the actions you have taken tonight in favor of air quality. I don't think any of us could argue with air quality. City Councilor Dan Lewis has persuaded or threatened enough of his council colleagues to pass the resolutions, gutting the, the Air Quality Board. His actions in this manner have been angry, disruptive, defamatory, and entirely in the service of special interests. His actions are not in the interests of the citizens of the county, but rather in the interests of economic interests that he represents. In my opinion, it is of the utmost importance that you, this county commission, continue to take the action you began tonight, to take every action you can to thwart the reckless performance of Dan Lewis and, and people who voted with him. What we as citizens want from our representatives are civil discourse, intelligent compromise, and enlightened action to serve the people. Most importantly, if you do not resist the politics of resentment and fear embodied by people like Dan Lewis, it will not be the last time we see such destructive and counterproductive political warfare. So I encourage you to spend your legal and political resources on this matter and do everything you can to see that it doesn't stand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Victoria Martin, followed by Karen Caffey, followed by Lan Sena, followed by Mary Ingham.
Victoria Martin, I have provided for each of you a copy of this presentation booklet, The Twelve Days of Christmas. I must tell you the inspiration for the concept regarding the layout came after attending your last meeting before the end of November and seeing the beautiful tree fully decorated and shining in the lobby. The results of the November 7th, 2023 local elections on the Secretary of State's website showed a results last updated timestamp of 20 November 2023 at 6:27 a.m. for days. That version showed the total for each race by precinct and zeros on the tabs that create that total, that is, zeros for number of absentee, early voting, and election day voting by precinct. Without those subtotals, you are not able to derive what is on the total page. Finally, on November 27th at 2:52 p.m., another update occurred. The totals appeared, and now on the spreadsheets showing detail for the precinct participation by absentee, early voting, and election day voting were there and tied back to the vote totals per precinct. But what about the bonds? Another update occurred on November 28th at 11:00, at 1:11 p.m. Every bond question spreadsheet we have looked at goes just as item 980 general bond does. Using 980 as an example, yeses and nos. Total 53,350 to 16,274. Absentee vote 53,350 to 16,274. Early vote 53,350 to 16,274. Election day 53,350 to 16,274. Something is afoul with the running of the software.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lan Sena, followed by Mary Ingham, followed by Connie V. Hill.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Lan Sena, Policy Director for the Center for Civic Policy, but more importantly, I'm coming to you as a cancer patient battling stage four Hodgkin's lymphoma for the fourth time. Having access to paid family and medical leave is the reason why I'm here today. However, the resources available to me may change as my cancer continues to spread. I may require more assistance from loved ones. My sister, who previously helped me survive my bone marrow transplant, recently had to go on disability after having her third baby due to not having access to paid family and medical leave. I know that being a mom is not a disability. However, her employer does not share the same value. She is an emergency medicine physician serving our state when we needed her most, and more importantly, has been one of my greatest supporters. She will not be able to show up for me the same way she did previously because she does not have access to paid family and medical leave. I am not willing to have her go on unpaid leave, forcing her to make the tough decision of providing for her family or caring for her younger sister struggling through stage four cancer for the fourth time. This is a decision many New Mexicans face when dealing with a life-threatening disease or health issue. Supporting paid family and medical leave, as it was written in the 2023 session, is the difference between letting cancer patients go through chemo or surgery or alone, or be with their loved ones when they need the support the most. I urge you to support paid family medical leave as a priority for the county in the 2024 legislative session and save thousands of lives like mine. I'd also like to take this time as a former city councillor and as someone who has cancer in my lungs, having an air quality control board that is fighting so that others may not face my same battle is critical, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Sena.
My name is Mary Ingham. In the summer of 1974, I worked for the Burnley County Parks and Recreation Department with children with special needs. At that time, the seal had a cross on it, some of you may remember that. An ACLU suit in 1980 forced the removal of the cross. Since abandoning the cross of Jesus Christ, we have seen a decline in our county in terms of families, education, culture, safety, and behavioral health, as we've heard. The church had provided strength and stability for Burnley County for decades. But as a, as a Christmas, Christ, Christ, mass, more Christ gift to the county, I will read from the Holy Bible, from the Old Testament, Isaiah 9:2 and 6 through 7. The people who walked in darkness have seen a great light. Those who dwelt in the land of the shadow of death, among them, a light has shined. For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government will be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor. Mighty God, everlasting Father and Prince of Peace. I wish you all very blessed and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, ma'am.
Connie V. Hill, and then we have two speakers online.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission and staff, I'm here today to introduce myself as something you don't know. I'm the President of the Greater Albuquerque Business Alliance, proud graduate of New Mexico Tech, UNO Med School, and NMSU. My background in medical research has brought me to the place I am today, a statewide lobbyist for behavioral health. I'm proud to say that we're about to announce two pieces of legislation that could very well solve the very issues that I'd like to commend Commissioner Eric Olivas for bringing up. This is not a county issue or a city issue, it's a state issue that requires a state issue resolve. And we're about to see that through two leaders in our direct community of Senator Bill Tomlin and Representative Pamela Herndon. And I couldn't be more prouder of my association with Senator Jerry Ortiz-Pino over the past 10 years, and of Julie Marcus Baca for her leadership for having sent three people from the county to Dade County, Miami, Florida, where we can learn from the best practices. LHHS, which is Legislative Health and Human Services, has a large request. This year, we will see bigger funding through the New Mexico Schools of Higher Education to bring a steady flow of graduates into the behavioral fields and support them through continued higher education scholarships. We will also see a creation of the Behavioral Health Trust Fund, which in the two bills that will come out of drafting tomorrow, will legislate not only appropriation for strategic planning for eight regional centers of care, but it will also set aside in the Behavioral Health Trust Fund, funding for those eight facilities. This has been well thought out with communication, and I have to shout out to Bryce Pittinger, because she has been a very big mentor to me, and I want to acknowledge the state legislators in LHHS and other committees that we've spoken to who have the leadership to bring it forward.
Thank you, Ms. Pittinger.
Thank you.
Via Zoom, we have Megan De La Rosa, followed by Cindy Sakoman.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas has a question?
I just wanted to, to say to Ms. V. Hill, I just wanted to commend you for your tireless effort advocating for, for behavioral health, mental health resources in our community. And there's, there's no one that's more passionate and more persistent than you, and really want to commend you for your work, and looking forward to seeing those bills and seeing where we can move this at the state level, so thank you.
Megan De La Rosa or Cindy Sakoman?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Megan De La Rosa. I'm the Executive Director of the Kirtland Partnership Committee. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time on the air quality board issue. The KPC supports restructuring the air quality board because it impacts so many organizations and units on the Kirtland- and units on the Kirtland National Security Complex, which is home to 23,000 jobs, 14,000 retirees, 10,000 families inside the fence of Kirtland's 52,000 acres, and boasts an economic impact of nearly $8 billion to the Albuquerque and Burnley County area. Restructuring will allow all stakeholders from across the city and county to come together once again to collaborate and create sensible solutions to the complex issues that make up air quality. Thank you.
Cindy, if you can hear us, if you can unmute.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Cindy Bolaños Sakoman. I have been an evaluator for several substantive use prevention interim programs for over 20 years, and I'm currently the Director of the New Mexico Tribal Behavioral Health Providers Association. For the record, I would like to state my support for the, my support and the support of the DWI Resource Center for the proposed resolution of the Alcohol Harms alleviation fund. New Mexico has had the highest alcohol-related death in the nation since 1997, and according to the Department of Health, we've reached our all-time high in 2021 with 2,274 alcohol-related deaths. This is equivalent to losing a life every four hours. In 2023, alcohol costs our state $3.1 billion. Something has to change. Alcohol use disorder is not the only problem. We have high rates of binge drinking, heavy drinking, pregnant drinking, and underage drinking. In 2021, 19% of Burnley County High School students reported first drink before the age of 13. In addition, women 18 to 44 are binge drinking or heavy drinking at increased rates, according to decades of CDC data, and that gender gap is narrowing each year. Increasing the price of alcohol leads to a reduction in alcohol dependency, motor vehicle crashes, sexually transmitted infections, violence, alcohol consumption, and fatalities. The AHA fund is estimated to raise $275 million, which will fund much-needed alcohol prevention, treatment, and recovery services. These funds will support programs and services to lower income, especially those most harmed from excessive alcohol consumption, and provide support for victims of alcohol-related crimes, including domestic violence and sexual assault victims. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, last call for Karen Cathy. Okay, that concludes public comment.
That concludes public, okay, so thank you all very much for your patience. We are going to take a 20-minute dinner break, and we will be back then at, what time would that be? 7:40.
Thank you, madam manager. I'm going to get started. Thank you all for the break. Really appreciate it. We're going to go ahead and get started again. And we are on item seven, approval of the minutes. I move approval of, pardon me, the November 14th, 2023 administrative minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Quesada, are you still with us?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson had to log off, so there's four of us now.
Okay, Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you. Item eight, approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for item, let's see, eight, B, E, F, G, H, I, and J? The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, therefore I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Madam Chair, item eight B is FR 2023-128. Eight E is FR 2023-129. Eight F is AR 2023-130. Eight G is AR 2023-131. Eight H is AR 2023-132. Eight I is AR 2023-133. And eight J is FR 2023-134.
Thank you.
And the roll call vote, Commissioner Benson.
He's excused.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you. Item nine, adoption of ordinance amendment to the county code. Waterway safety ordinance amendments, sponsored by Commissioner Quesada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's just a pretty simple amendment. I just needed to add some language to address the drainage ponds to the ordinance that we had already approved. If you'd like more information, I'm sure our county attorney could give you more information. He's the one that helped me work on it.
Is that a motion to introduce and approve for public?
Yeah, so I move for approval, Madam Chair, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions of the county attorney or Commissioner Quesada? None seen will go to a roll call vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson is excused. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you. Item nine B, finance, the healthcare grocery receipts tax. Denise Benavides will be presenting.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Denise Benavides. I'm the fiscal, sorry, principal financial analyst with the finance division. So the item before you is a motion to introduce and approve or publication an amendment of the Bernalillo County Code to extend the 116th healthcare grocery receipts tax for an additional five years pursuant to New Mexico Statute Section 7-20E-18B, which allows for the continuance of the healthcare GRT in five-year increments with board approval. This tax is utilized to support various services for the benefit of indigent residents of Bernalillo County. With board approval, the ordinance will be published for the required 30 days and will be presented for adoption at the January 23rd, 2024 meeting. An adoption will ensure that there's no interruption in funding for an additional five years and will amend the code to ensure that the delayed repeal date of June 30th of 2029 is appropriately published in the county code, replacing the current repeal date of June 30th, 2024. And I'll stand for questions.
Any questions? I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Benson is excused. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you. Item nine D, economic development, Mr. Marcos Gonzalez. Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Marcos Gonzalez, Executive Development Officer for the county. The economic development staff recommends authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to adopt the ordinance to issue project revenue bonds, multifamily housing revenue bonds, not to exceed $24 million on behalf of NCNO Limited Partnership, LLP, DBA, and CNO Senior Gardens for the purpose of renovating 165 senior affordable apartment homes. And I'll stand for any questions and just let you know representatives from the group right here as well.
Thank you. Do you want to move approval first?
Yeah, I'd like to move approval.
Move approval?
Yes.
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 Move approval?
You go to, is it two? Thank you, man.
You ready, Madam Manager? I'm gonna get started. Thank you all for the break. Really appreciate it. We're gonna go ahead and get started again. And we are on item seven, approval of the minutes. I move approval of, pardon me, the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three administrative minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Quesada, are you still with us?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson had to log off. So there's four of us now.
Okay, Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you. Item eight, approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for item, let's see, eight, B, E, F, G, H, I, and J? The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. Therefore, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item eight B is FR twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-eight. Eight E is FR twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-nine. Eight F is AR twenty twenty-three dash one thirty. Eight G is AR twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-one. Eight H is AR twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-two. Eight I is AR twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-three. And eight J is FR twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-four.
And the roll call vote, Commissioner Benson.
He's excused.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
Just a quick moment of personal privilege. I just wanted to thank our technical services staff, Dan McGregor, and Colley for their work on the Alameda Outfall Project. Got the opportunity to get a quick briefing from them on that. It is a really great project for improving water quality and looking at emergent contaminants like PFOS and PCBs. And really, this is an example of the county leading the way on an emerging issue to improve water quality and look for innovative ways to find funding to improve our water and also improve our bosque, one of our most valuable and cherished open spaces. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, adoption of ordinance amendment to the county code. Waterway Safety Ordinance Amendments, sponsored by Commissioner Quesada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's just a pretty simple amendment. I just needed to add some language to address the drainage ponds to the ordinance that we had already approved. If you'd like more information, I'm sure our county attorney could give you more information. He's the one that helped me work on it.
Is that a motion to introduce and approve for public?
Yeah, so I move for approval, Madam Chair, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions of the county attorney or Commissioner Quesada? None seen will go to a roll call vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson is excused. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you. That passes, thank you. Item nine B, finance, the healthcare grocery receipts tax. Denise Benavides will be presenting.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Denise Benavides. I'm the fiscal, sorry, principal financial analyst with the Finance Division. So the item before you is a motion to introduce and approve or publication an amendment of the Bernalillo County Code to extend the one-sixteenth healthcare grocery receipts tax for an additional five years pursuant to New Mexico Statute Section seven dash twenty E dash eighteen B, which allows for the continuance of the healthcare GRT in five-year increments with board approval. This tax is utilized to support various services for the benefit of indigent residents of Bernalillo County. With board approval, the ordinance will be published for the required thirty days and will be presented for adoption at the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting. And adoption will ensure that there's no interruption in funding for an additional five years and will amend the code to ensure that the delayed repeal date of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine is appropriately published in the county code, replacing the current repeal date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And I'll stand for questions.
Any questions? I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Benson is excused. Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Big aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And is this you also?
So this item is, the Finance Division is recommending approval of the notice of intent to adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the Bernalillo County New Mexico General Obligation Bond Series twenty twenty-four in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty-one million one hundred and fifteen thousand. Proceeds from this sale will be used for parks and recreation, public safety, public housing, library, and fleet. Property tax revenue projections are adequate to fund the sale with no increase to the bond debt real rate. The county plans to bring forward an agenda for the final adoption of the ordinance at the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four administrative meeting for board approval. Interest rates on the bonds will be determined via competitive sale process. Bids will be scheduled through the Grant Street Auction Electronic Website on or after February twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four. Interest rates will be provided to the County Commission in March. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I move approval, a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Benavides. Appreciate your work. Item nine D, economic development, Mr. Marcos Gonzalez. Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm Marcos Gonzalez, Executive Development Officer for the county. The Economic Development Staff recommends authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to adopt the ordinance to issue project revenue bonds, multifamily housing revenue bonds, not to exceed twenty-four million dollars on behalf of NCNO Limited Partnership, LLP, DBA, and CNO Senior Gardens for the purpose of renovating one-hundred-and-sixty-five senior affordable apartment homes. And I'll stand for any questions. And just let you know, representatives from the group right here as well.
Thank you. Do you want to move approval first?
Yeah, I'd like to move.
Move approval? And that's been moved and seconded.
Madam Chair.
And we need to convene a public hearing. Did anyone sign up, Julie?
Madam Chair, there are no signups for this.
No signups. And thank you, Madam Clerk, we need an ordinance number.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For this item, it is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
Business is taking care of any questions of Mr. Gonzalez.
Just appreciations from the briefing today and for folks being here in person and waiting through our long democratic process. And thanks for your patience and thanks for this work. One-hundred-and-sixty-five units, remodeled. This is in my district, really proud and thankful for this opportunity and that the county could help to resource this for our seniors. I understand that there's meals on site, programming, and I'm just really grateful that our seniors and our community get this kind of thing. So thank you. Thank you, Marcos, very working.
I also wanted to thank you. It's very important to have this affordable housing for our seniors, and this is a wonderful project. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yeah, to add to the chorus here, I appreciate your work, Director Gonzalez, and for the management development team to be here tonight. This is really important and great use of our economic development funds and making sure that we are supporting redevelopment of existing affordable housing to keep it affordable but also keep it modern, adding things like PV solar, parking amenities, upgrading lighting, windows. Those are all really important things. But also just thank you for operating here in Bernalillo County. I saw in your description, this isn't your only property here. I think it says there's four properties with three-hundred-and-some units. So really important to have those housing units. Every unit counts. And so just want to thank you for your commitment to our community and to housing people. And to the Director, I just wanted to say thank you for this graphic that is on, well, it's package page one thousand and seven, but it's, the graphic's showing tax exemption versus net gain, and I felt like that was just a really helpful graphic to show kind of what we are foregoing or what we are giving as a county and what we are getting from the developer directly or from, you know, benefits received indirectly. And that made it a really easy way to understand this project and just the dollars and cents of net benefit. But of course, the housing component really makes it a special case as well. So, thank you.
So that's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. And that passes, thank you. Item E, economic development, also, Mr. Gonzalez.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends authorizing the Bernalillo County Commission to adopt the ordinance to participate together with the state of New Mexico, the city of Albuquerque, in a Lita grocery receipt tax share on behalf of the Maxion Solar Technologies for the purpose of the investment into infrastructure for their project at Mesa del Sol. Like to note that members of, from the company and then also members from the city and state are also here with us as well, should we have any questions. But I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Madam Clerk, for the ordinance number four.
Yes, Madam Chair. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, for the record, there are no signups for this item.
Thank you. Any questions for Marcos?
I just, again, wanted, I don't know if Commissioner Quesada wants to make the motion to...
Commissioner Quesada?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, I would move for approval.
A second. Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment that I really, again, appreciate this. I think I live probably closest to this area, just down the hill, even though it's not in my district, it's right on the boundary. And I'm just so excited about the future opportunities for solar, for our families, our generations, our young people. Marcos gave me a really great briefing today that include that, you know, the one-thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-four total jobs, that there's workforce partnerships with CNM. Just thank you for all the work and thoughtfulness put into this and for bringing all our governments together to make it happen. So just wanted to be grateful. Thank you for also waiting through our long process.
Commissioner Olivas.
You know, I commented on this item the last time we considered it, and, you know, I want to say the basis of what I said, I don't think has fundamentally changed in that this is a great project. This is a good thing for our climate, for our state in many regards. But I have concerns with it as well because, you know, we are pursuing, we're putting a lot of eggs in one basket here. And I think oftentimes, but not always, I think our department does a very good job of making sure that we're also supporting some of our smaller businesses, some of our local, more established folks. But, you know, as I said last time, one of my big concerns is, you know, driving up and down Central Avenue from San Mateo East, there's a lot of vacant properties, but there's a lot of businesses that are still operating that are absolutely struggling. They are buckling under the weight of the challenges. Some of those we've already talked about here tonight, behavioral health, homelessness, housing, our last item. It's the stuff we struggle with every day. And, you know, I continue to beat the drum that, you know, we can't just look at the shiny objects that are great. This is a good project. But we have to look at the businesses that are already here, that are struggling or that are not struggling but looking to expand and doing well but need that extra boost. And sometimes I think that is going to require additional thinking outside of the box because we have things like the anti-donation clause and things like that that really limit some of the things that I think are huge challenges to our businesses that we can't necessarily address through direct incentives like this. And it's just really important that we support businesses once they are here, the ones that are already operating here. And I hope that we continue our support of Maxion and this project beyond this initial boost because I don't want them to see the same systemic issues that some of our other businesses are seeing. And it's just so important that we support our entire economy and not just look for these large, you know, yeah, this is over a thousand jobs, this is huge for our county, for our community. I don't deny that. And the climate impact of having this kind of solar manufacturing onshore where we're not shipping them overseas is really important. So, you know, I think to summarize what I'm saying, I think that I'm going to change my previous vote to support this because I think it's a good project. But I'm going to continue to reiterate and evaluate every one of these projects, looking at this and saying, look, we have got to start thinking more and more about local businesses that are here, that the people that are employing one or two people, but they're struggling under the weight of the challenges we have, and how can we get creative and use economic development to help them too?
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, please know that we started some discussions with our bond counsel and we'll also talk to the county attorney about how we kind of take some of those challenges we talked about, especially yesterday, and use the economic development lens to help out those small businesses. So let us continue our work and then we can get back with you as well.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Oh, sure. And this is, go ahead.
Good afternoon, good evening. Commission Chair and Commissioners, if I may just add to that one small point, by having a Maxion here, this, there is a domino effect to our community. That is fifteen-hundred extra employees, fifteen-hundred extra people that will benefit those small businesses in the surrounding area. Those coffee shops, those restaurants will all benefit from ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty extra people visiting, those dry cleaners, you name it. They're, they will impact that community and the communities surrounding it. So just a tiny little note, but to let you know that there is a domino effect that does impact all of those small businesses that will truly benefit from companies like Maxion. Thank you.
Madam Chair. And I totally appreciate that, the, I hate this description, the trickle-down effect because I just want to say that's important, but, you know, the direct stuff is just as important, if not more important, because, you know, nobody wants to go to your business if there's camps in front of it. It doesn't matter how many new employees we add and how much money they're making. If there's feces on the steps of the sidewalk, walking up to it, those challenges are real, and those are things we need to address too. So it's, to me, it's both. So, well taken, and I totally acknowledge that.
Any other questions? So it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to nine F, Planning and Development Services. Mr. Hamm.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Madam Manager, how are you all? I'm your guide for the next four items. Those would be items F through I. In the interest of time and brevity, I'm going to give a short preamble that's applicable to all of them. These are all amendments to the county zoning ordinance. All of them have gone through the requisite County Planning Commission recommendation process. I'm happy to report that they all received unanimous blessing from that body. But before it gets there, it also goes through a neighborhood notification process, and that includes sending a mailing to every registered neighborhood association or coalition in the county. And we take that feedback and we incorporate it into our proposed idea, and then we take that to the planning commission. So these, all of four of these requests are born out of that community-based and planning commission process. I'll start with agenda item F. This is a motion to introduce amendments to the zoning code to allow a minor amendment process to be enabled by the zoning administrator. What that means is it creates a process that does not require a public hearing by which a property owner or a user that was granted an entitlement by the county through a special use permit provision would be able to propose very minor changes to their site development plan without having to convene the entire public hearing machine. As an example, say for instance that as someone is engaging in the building or construction design, they discover things about their structure that would need to be modified that would potentially increase or decrease the square footage that they're approved for, if an access area needs to be shifted for traffic constraints, or if a grading and drainage area needs to be modified when an engineer takes a closer look at something like that. Those are the kinds of things that would enable, would be enabled to go through the zoning administrator's minor amendment process. There is a similar process enabled through the city's zoning infrastructure. So we did consult with our colleagues there to make sure that we're not stepping out further than what they do. And there is also, we maintain discretion if we come across a case that was initially controversial or we have a concern about how this might impact the local community, we can also divert those types of amendments through the standard hearing process as well. So what we're looking for is to create efficiencies in properties that are already entitled for things that are very minor in nature that wouldn't have significant or substantial impacts on the surrounding community. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. I move approval to, for introduction and approval of publication.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions for Mr. Hamm?
I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
So just to be clear, this still, those amendments, those changes to special use permits are still going to be vetted through the zoning administrator, through a process that makes sure there's, there is an engineer stamp on it saying that this change needs to be made or, you know, conversations with an architect or whatever, that, that these are vetted?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, indeed, they are. The zoning administrator is a very, I would characterize as at a higher level technical position within Planning and Development Services. The individual that holds that office currently is very experienced. She has nearly twenty years of experience. She holds a master's degree in planning. She serves as the hearing officer for a number of the county's required ordinances. So there is a very capable and experienced individual right now that will be administering this particular process. And there's also the support of the department and county departments more broadly. So in instances that you've brought up where we might need input from the building official or members of our public works department, nothing about this change would preclude her from consulting them about their input.
And in my understanding of a typical special use permit process, you know, there would be notice given to the surrounding community and, you know, taking input from those stakeholders, neighbors, that kind of thing. So they're going to see one plan that's drafted, and then that plan might change through this sort of technical change process. Would they ever receive notice of those technical changes? How does that work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, this would be designed such that the only things that would be going through this process would not be impacting those surrounding property owners. And we do that by quantifying a ceiling on the, a percentage that can be changed on the special use permit entitlement, that they can't reduce required site features such as landscaping, open space areas, buffers, they can't reduce setback distances to residential zones. So inherent in this process are built-in protections. While something might happen that's minor on a site, it is designed such that those things that can occur would only be things that would not be impactful to the surrounding community.
That makes less sense. I appreciate you clarifying that. That sounds like it offers some fairly strong protections to neighborhoods and individuals that are part of that process and might see one thing that's approved and then wonder why something changed, but it seems like they probably wouldn't even notice because they should be such minor and interior changes that it shouldn't matter.
Certainly. Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, I would completely agree with that characterization. I would also add that PDS is a very open book. If a property owner wants to take a look at a special use permit file and even sit down with the planner while they do that, that's something that we're happy to accommodate.
Great. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. No other questions? I'll call for a vote, roll call vote.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Item G.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item G, this one is incredibly straightforward and simple. A legacy error in the zoning code characterizes school as both a conditional and a permissive use in the county C-one zone. We've always treated it as permissive. It's conditional in the residential zones. Logic would generally dictate that conditional uses in lower zones would be permissive in higher zones. This removes school from the list of conditional uses in the C-one zone. It clarifies it as it's explicitly a permissive use. That's all, that's all there is to this one.
I move.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion?
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Quesada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. And lastly, but not least.
Two more, Madam Chair.
Oh, two more.
I'm almost, I'll round these out, I promise. So, item H, this is one of those small business economic development opportunities that we've identified through our work with the community. You'll recall that the county recently created a framework for mobile food establishments to operate in the county. This goes a step further. It creates a scenario where through a conditional use process in the C-one zone and permissively in higher zones, one could develop what we're calling a mobile food establishment court. That's a more permanent setup in nature that would allow these mobile food establishments to set up shop on a property that's designed to accept them full-time essentially. And that would be through provision of necessary restroom facilities, provision of necessary infrastructure to not require them to run generators twenty-four-seven, to have required seating and parking, trash receptacles, things of that nature. So this is not what I would call unique to our states in the surrounding area. It's something that we've seen established in other communities very successfully. We felt that, given the robust mobile food industry that has, that Bernalillo County is happy to have, that this was an opportunity to provide additional support and opportunity for them. So this creates an opportunity for those folks to either apply for or develop, depending upon which zone they might emanate from. Would that all stand for questions?
I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions?
I do.
Commissioner Olivas.
So, first of all, do you, do you know if the city has any, like, comparable zoning status for this kind of thing?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, I can't point to a specific provision in the Integrated Development Ordinance. I am aware of some that have sprung up in the community. One that's located off of San Antonio and San Pedro area comes to mind. But standing here right now, I wouldn't, I would, I would be remiss if I tried to point to a specific provision in the code.
So this makes it very clear what the county's process is, what zones qualify, and how that works, making it permissive use essentially, so you can go pick up your permit, right? Okay. And why, just out of curiosity, why are we not broadening that to all commercial zones versus just C, C-two and higher? versus just C, C2 and higher?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, the reason behind that is that the C1 zone can often be found adjacent to residential zones. The conditional use process provides a public hearing process for those properties to be developed in a manner that's harmonious with the surrounding residential neighborhood that they might find themselves adjacent to. Conditional uses are anticipated to occur from a zone. In other words, there's some wind at their back, provided they provide a complete application and the site is designed in such a way that's thoughtful about the requirements. But the department felt that, especially given that we're, we're testing this ourselves, that out of the gate, providing it as a conditional use in the zones that would be located, that would be expected to be located next to our residences would, would give more control over us being able to implement this harmoniously.
Okay. But a conditional use doesn't give neighboring property owners a veto of it. It just gives them a, a voice in the process, essentially, but they don't have final say over that approval.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, you're correct. They, they are noticed. A sign goes up, a legal ad in the journal goes out. They are provided unlimited time generally to testify at the zoning administrator's public hearing. It's not a popularity contest. The criteria for approval of conditional use are that the property is adequate in size and shape, that it's not bad for the neighborhood in a very simplified version of that criteria, and that you won't create undue traffic hazards or congestion. So those are, that's the three-pronged criteria that the zoning administrator will consider approval of these four.
Very well done. I, I definitely support this. I think this is a good way to continue to build up our food, our food industry, our food community.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Ben, Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, last one. This is, we're going to veer into sort of the technical minutia of the zoning code here. We're proposing to amend the required notification process for amendments to existing sector development plans. What that means is when we do a change to an adopted entitlement document, like a sector plan, what we have to do is provide notification to neighborhood associations, provide notice in a, in the journal, in a paper of general circulation, I think is the language in the code. And then we have to do a mailing. And that mailing, as it sits currently, is 500 feet from the border of the sector plan itself. That, we've found, is a bit cumbersome. It stirs up the community in a way that we haven't found to be entirely beneficial. I'll use an example. When we added cannabis and the amendment to the restaurant liquor license provisions to the Zletta Sector Plan, we did a mailing on the order of 3,500 property owners, and we received a handful of calls back. So what we're asking here is to make our amendments to sector plan processes more consistent with some of the other notice provisions for other types of entitlement work that we do in the zoning code. So this doesn't change the adoption of the sector plan. That's going to remain a 500-foot dimension. What it does is it shortens the buffer distance that we have to go to for a mailing when we want to make amendments to those existing documents that entitle an area. And that's going to be consistent with the mailing that we would do for zoning administrator requests, for special use permit requests, for zone change requests, depending on their nature. So this is one of those things where we're trying to find efficiencies where we can, but also being very mindful of the fact that our process is community-based, it's grassroots, it reaches out to neighborhood-level types of folks, and that we do seek engagement, not only through the mailing process, but through the other means that we're required to do as well. I'll stand for questions.
I'll move approval on that.
Second.
Any questions? Okay. Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hamm.
Thank you.
As usual, very professional, thorough. Item J, Technical Services.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening. I'm Brian Lopez, Technical Services Director, and also have Dan McGregor, my Natural Resources Services Section Manager here as well. I'd like to take this opportunity to present our Technical Services item to introduce for publication amendments to our subdivision ordinance, Articles 1 through 10. And I know this has been kind of a long meeting, so I'll be brief in this item as I think these are minor changes that we're proposing. We last brought this item before the commission on October 10th of this year. And during the October through November publication period, staff performed additional review of the amendments, and the need for further amendments was identified. These new amendments warrant a second publication for public comment prior to the consideration for adoption. Some of the things found were some minor typographical and formatting errors, and also two changes of importance. The first proposed amendment of importance is to change the existing reference to the Albuquerque-Burnley County Comprehensive Plan with no version date specified to a more generic self-maintaining reference of the currently adopted county comprehensive plan. This change allows modifications to be made to the comprehensive plan without having to bring back this, to have to come back to the commission for updates to the subdivision ordinance. The second proposed amendment deals with language regarding water and wastewater utilities, where each lot must be provided service at the property line. Currently, that phrase is only used with respect to sewer and wastewater service systems, and there's no such requirement for providing public water system services at the property line. Our proposed amendment will ensure that water service is available for every property where applicable. So for this item, we're requesting a motion to approve the second publication for public comment of the amendments to the subdivision ordinance. And should the ordinance be approved for publication, the October-published amendments will be republished along with the newly proposed amendments. And further comment on those proposed amendments will be allowed through the second public comment period. And with that, I stand for questions.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the publishing of the amendments.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions for Mr. Lopez? Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Vice Chair Barboia.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move on to item 10 on the agenda, Adoption of Resolutions, the Capital Improvement Program. Ms. Kathy Court, Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. AR 2023-135.
Thank you.
Ms. Court?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Olivas, Commissioner Casada, and Madam County Manager. So this item is a request for approval of our administrative resolution that adopts Burnley County's 2024 State Legislative Policy Priorities. Our proposed legislative policy priorities for this upcoming 24 legislative session that begins on January 16th and is a 30-day session. They have been prepared by staff in collaboration with our lobbyists. And because I've given you the document, and it's pretty long, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about any of the items on our resolution, our proposed resolution.
Any questions for Ms. Court?
Madam Chair, I would move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Kathy Court, for the communication consistent and always sending the documents and real transparent. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
I wanted to thank you for, yeah, for, again, for being proactive on outreach with this and, you know, setting up briefings and getting, you know, me together with you, our lobbyists, Shirley, the whole team, to talk through some of my concerns and, and really making, you know. I think this really, by and large, is, is really great. Some of the changes that you all agreed to make and, and did make really followed through on making this a vision for the legislative policy priorities of the county and addressing some of the, the largest concerns, you know, beginning with housing, which, you know, we talk about a lot as, as the long-term solution, economic development, making sure we have that vitality in our community to support good jobs and, and purpose for people, behavioral health, healthcare, public safety, the, the core things that government does and that we do every day. With that being said, I did have a couple of amendments that I wanted to make. I've worked on some of these with, with Jason Weeks and our lobbying team. And so if I wanted to go through those, I have them separated in, in three. They're designed so that if one of them fails, that it's not really contingent on the other ones. So with that being said, the one, the First Amendment, Amendment 1, is to strike Section 8A. So this is a, a clause that I really appreciated the, the help of Ms. Court and Shirley and our lobbyists to, to refine. But after kind of sleeping on this again and again and reading through this document, I, I felt that this was an, an area that I just still couldn't get behind when this is a, this is a policy resolution. It's, it's meant to support specific policies and policy stances. And so I'll read the, the direct amendment. So strike Section 8A. So we're striking all of this support legislation in which revenue and regulatory-related proposals promote and enhance public safety, public welfare, and enhance public services, oppose legislation that imposes unfunded mandates, diminishes local regulatory authority, and/or harms the ability of local governments to provide essential services. I would make a motion for the amendment.
Second.
And just to, to, again, give a little context on this, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I just think that, you know, this resolution is, is a resolution of the policies that the county supports with, you know, some reasons why we support them, why we, or, or we could put in here things that we don't support if we wanted to, you know, that's, that's also an option. But I just think it's important that the commission be very specific and very thoughtful and make those specific calls on those things and, and make sure that we give that guidance and that we're involved in the process from the beginning, as we have been. I mean, this is, this is great. And so this is one, one change that I would like to make.
So the First Amendment has been moved and seconded. We'll take each amendment separately. Any discussion on that amendment?
Just, I did want to just know on the, because of several of my legislators in my district who lead this, who are leading this policy at the state. Oh, we're, yeah, I think, you know, it's been surprising to me a couple of times. I, I would think I asked county manager, one of the points, like, oh, how did we decide to support or not support something? So I just really support, you know, more transparent, getting the information firsthand. So we're not surprised when we hear that we're not supporting something that we didn't even, that didn't come before us. Thank you for this amendment.
May I offer just an insight for that? Yeah, absolutely. No problem. I, I totally understand that. Just so you know, obviously, throughout the legislative session, every day I'm looking at introduced pieces of legislation. I'm sharing them with our departments if I think there's a relevance to our priorities that are listed here. Our lobbyists, on the other hand, are also there informing us of any legislation that might be either beneficial or detrimental to the county. When they do that, we have an internal process by which, you know, let's say it's a financial impact, for example, we're sending it to Shirley's team for analysis. And so it's not ever just a gut reaction, no or yes. We do a lot of background research. We talk to New Mexico counties as our third prong in this approach, where, you know, I'm meeting with them every morning during the legislative session. We're talking with all the county representatives about the pieces of legislation that maybe the New Mexico counties is pursuing, or watching, or asking us to provide feedback to because it might have an impact on counties. So it's a three-pronged approach to how we look at pieces of legislation, whether we decide to oppose it or support it. And we absolutely can build into that process. Just a summary for you all. I have lists of items that our departments are interested in, in me to be tracking, and we can certainly do that with you all, in addition to just making you aware of pieces of legislation that we're following and that we're concerned about and why. And, but again, this is really a partnership between New Mexico counties, our lobbyists, our administrative team, our departments, and at the end of the day, it's also you involved in that, too. So I just wanted to clarify that that is what we do. It isn't just a gut reaction to something that's introduced.
Thank you for that, Kelly.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, just thank you for that, and thank you for recognizing that we can be included in that process because I've seen it before I was on commission, right? Paid sick leave was coming through, tried to come through the county, was denied, go through the state. And every time we heard paid sick leave, and it was like, the world's going to be on fire, and we're going to all deflate if we pass this thing, right? And I'll, and guess what? It's passed, and we're all still here. Heard the same thing. I actually was here the first year when qualified immunity was going through this same process. And we actually voted for us to stay neutral on it. And then I was at the roundhouse, and I saw staff here talking against qualified immunity. So it's both, it's hard to both be surprised at that and not be informed as a, as some, as a county commissioner. But it's also hard because, like, I, I get that you're seeing NACO or others are giving an input, but are we, you know, also following up with sponsors of the bill? I think our sponsors and our legislators do a lot of work to make sure they're passing sound policy that's also not going to harm our communities. So I just, I feel like I've seen a few times where it's actually been a place that we're, we're joining in the crowd of saying this is going to really harm us. And, and it has, I've seen the proof that it hasn't. We're still here after qualified immunity. We're still here after paid sick leave. And so I want to be ambassador for the county, too. And if there is pieces of legislation that, that we're worried or concerned about, then let us be a part of that, too. So thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
And I, I just wanted to say, I, I, that internal process, I think, is so important, and it's still part of this. It's still part of how our, our, you know, legislative process works and our, our way of working with the state and the state government legislature. I think it's, it's really just saying, you know, that, that information on those, those calls, the final calls, needs to be run through the policymakers, right, through the commission. And I know that's, that's tough sometimes because these sessions move fast. It's a 30-day session. That's, you know, that can be arduous, but that's our job, you know? That, that is our job to, to make ourselves available for that and make those tough calls with the information that the county administration, you, the county manager, Shirley, county attorney, gives us to, to make sure that we're making informed choices. And I want to be clear, this isn't just about paid sick leave. I've thought through this and thought this can swing both ways. You know, that there's, every year, there's consideration for removing the gross receipts tax from a lot of items. And I'm sure some of my conservative colleagues on the commission might like that as, as we've had discussions about reducing taxes before. But we know that that would affect our revenues directly. But we also need to think about the plus side of that for our community. You know, when you talk about reducing those taxes on medical services, that might increase providers, that might increase the competitiveness of our state in certain ways. So it's like, I think we need to, to really make sure that the policymakers, the elected policymakers are, are the ones making the final call with your support in guiding that and providing the best information. So I don't think this precludes that, but it really just says that, that we need to be making that call.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Madam Manager.
I just, before, I, I know that you'll be, you got an amendment, but one thing that I did want to bring up was the, the paid family medical leave legislation. So I'm just going to put my county manager hat on for a second and just want to voice my concerns over that. So we do have FMLA. Everybody knows that. We already have that here at the county. And at MDC alone, and I know that interim warden Oteto is here, she can tell you all about that and the nightmares we're having at the MDC because of overtime. It's just hard for, to get people to come to work, and their jobs are so, so hard. But at MDC alone, MDC employees accrued 34,414 FMLA hours. That's costing $1.8 million in overtime. And that was just in, I think FY '22 alone, right? So the Legislative Finance Committee estimated a statewide, that the statewide fund would have 219 million deficit as early as 2027, requiring all employees to seek, to see an uptick in their cost to cover the deficit. And then our own internal budget analysis showed paid family medical leave would cost each employee an would cost each employee an additional $584 in 2027 and close to $1,000 more in 2028 based on the LFC projections. And, you know, the only thing I want to tell you is that I know we offer, I think we probably offer the most generous benefits packages in the whole entire state. I know we do, and that's why a lot of people do come to work for us. And I see Bernadette is here and can attest to that. And then we offer, I think, a very generous parental leave, right? For our, for our employees and their spouses, correct? Yeah, that if they both are working here, right? So, so we're just, I guess what I'd like to just kind of present to you is we're, we're just seeking some friendly amendments. I think it's good. I think that we do have to be good to our staff. And I don't think we're, we're not totally opposed to it, but maybe a waiver for local governments to opt out. As Kathy had alluded to, we checked with just about everybody, all the other counties, and everyone is opposing it. But when we're not saying we're opposing it, we're just saying we would like for you to consider some amendments because we have to protect the county. We have to protect our employees, too, that it's an unfunded mandate for them, correct? Because I think it comes out of the pockets of the staff. So, and then there's some, there's some others, and, you know, I don't want to keep, you know, in the spirit of time, but we would like to offer some friendly amendments. And we're not saying we're opposing it, but we're saying we'd like the opportunity to be able to work on the legislation, you know, for the benefit of Burnley County and I think all the other counties as well. So thank you, Madam Chair.
A question, Julie. So are you talking about the first amendment that we're talking about here? You're talking about the second amendment?
Second.
That we have, okay. So the first amendment is on the floor. We hear you, and then maybe let's get to that next.
Okay.
So we'll call a vote on the first amendment, striking item eight A.
Commissioner Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada. Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca.
Yes. So on to amendment number two. Commissioner Olivas.
Okay, so amendment number two will rename section eight from general provision to general policy and add section A, underline paid family medical leave. Support efforts to create a statewide PFML policy that, one, reasonably limits and prevents misuse and abuse of PFML; two, limits the total amount of leave allowable over a one-year rolling period; three, avoids potential conflicts with the federal FMLA and State Paid Sick Leave Act; and four, allows qualified employers that provide substantially similar benefits to employees to seek a waiver from the state PFML policy. Properly implemented PFML policies with appropriate safeguards for small businesses, essential service providers, and public safety operators have been shown to increase labor force participation and improve public health and well-being of employees. I move the amendment.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Explanation?
I do have some discussion.
Yeah, and if I could just briefly just introduce this, it's, you know, it goes to what I was saying on the first point, that I think our county management, our county administration, I 100% respect their role in thinking about the operations day-to-day of the jail, the CARES campus, the sheriff's department, you name it. That is their job, and I totally respect that. But if we are limited to that scope of view, I think we miss the forest through the trees, right? In that properly implemented PFML policies across the country where this has been happening. And there's, I think there's 14, 15 other states right now that are doing this. This increases labor force participation. We have the lowest labor force participation in the nation, or very close to it. And increasing that by like just a few percentage points would drastically improve our ability to recruit and retain people to work at the jail, to work at the CARES campus, to work in parks and rec. If we can draw people back into the workforce statewide, we solve bigger problems than just MDC recruiting where we pour tons of money into incentives and pay packages and benefits, and we're still at like 50, 40, 50% staffing. And I commend the work of our warden, our interim warden, and our county management team for that. But I think this is the, this is the 10-year plan right here, to figure out, how do we actually grow the pie? Instead of figuring out how we slice the pie up differently and take from one piece and move it over here, this is how we grow the pie. You bring people into the workforce. You bring people that feel like they can't participate because they just had a child, they just had a death, they just had surgery, they had, as misinnocent, you know, cancer. They have things that prevent them participating in the labor force or that cause them to not participate fully. This is a safeguard for the community that also, in the long run, I believe, supports employers. And so I think that I totally see from the operational perspective where the, on the one-year plan, this looks scary. I get it. I'm an employer, too. But on the 10-year plan, this is the right thing to do from a policy perspective. And I believe the right thing to do from the county's perspective, if we're talking about how we start to solve the chronic labor shortages in our state, we have to bring people into the workforce because we just can't keep slicing it differently. There's not enough people working.
Thank you. Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to also, again, I feel, I want to choose my words correctly. But I think we get these, and you're saying like it's not rushed or that, right? This, the current bill that's being proposed, and I just feel like we should be reaching out more often to the sponsors of these legislations to ask these questions and not just our lobbyists. Or our lobbyists should be required. I'm feeling, I'm trying to keep my words correct because I do feel upset that we would be told that there actually is a waiver for, you know, if you are offering similar or better, then you can request a waiver. Anyone can. And I don't think this paid family medical leave, as I've understood it, as it went through last year and as there's been provisions and, you know, President Pro Tem Mimi Stewart is the sponsor of it. So we play a relationship game in there, too, when we're opposing, when we're the county, the largest county in the whole entire state, and we're using our weight to say that it's not going to work when the intent isn't really, we, I believe, we already probably have way better than what this offers because it's really low bar because they're having to fight among 112 legislators. So this is a pretty low bar for what our expectations are. And I bet our, I could only, I could 99% bet all my money on the fact that we would have better than what this is, within what the current proposal that's going to go through the legislature offers. And that means that we could ask for a waiver. These are meant for the companies that aren't providing for their employees. These really are, that's the approach from Senator Mimi Stewart and advocates that come together, is because there is a lot of employers out there that aren't doing good by their employees. And that's not the county. I know it 100%. And so when we put our weight behind it, then what happened, we're actually harming those employees that aren't, don't have the great employers like the county. And that's a lot of people in our county. And so, and then that's a hugely lot of people in our state. So I just, I think that, you know, our misinformation or lack of information, and really if our lobbyists knew since last year that this was going to be run again. So why are we hearing about it now? Why are we making cases and reaching out now? And if we wanted to work with them, we could have started working with them in March, April, May, June, July, August. We knew that Senator Mimi Stewart was running this. We knew she was going to run it again. She's the president pro tem. And so we, of course, she would meet with us and work with us on this. So yes, I support this, and I'm feeling, yeah, I hope we request a waiver because I'm sure we offer better benefits than what this would offer, even for MDC employees.
County Manager, did you have a friendly amendment that you're requesting? You mentioned that.
Madam Chair Commissioners, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, like I say, I just have to put my county manager hat on. I have to think about the budget. I have to think about our staff. I think, have to think about the overtime, the burden that is placed, especially on the folks at the MDC that have to cover for these people that are going to, there'll be some that will, this is, this is good. I'm not saying it's not good. But then there's folks that, you know, will probably take advantage of it. And it's going to, it's going to pay a price. There's a price to be paid for the staff that's just really dedicated, and they're going to have to come to work and cover those shifts. And I just have to say that for the record, but for the most part, I mean, I think it's always good to offer benefits to staff. And I understand that. I understand the hardships. But, but yes, I do have some friendly amendments. I can go over them really quickly if you'd like me to, but if you'd like to.
Sponsor.
Is that okay? Okay, all right. So the first one that we would ask, would be asking for is a waiver for all local governments to opt out. Number two is limitations on who qualifies as a family member. Then number three, restrictions on leave, enter, what is this?
Indeterminate.
Indeterminate leave?
There were, there were, there was a lack of clarity on whether somebody can basically take six months off and tack on FMLA, sick leave, PFML. So pretty soon you've got an employee who's gone for six months, and there goes, and then you get into that overtime issue, you know, lack of staffing, especially in public safety. So, so that's what we mean by clarity on indeterminate leave.
Okay. And then clarity on whether PFML can be taken in conjunction with FMLA and sick leave. An employer may require an employee to exhaust accrued leave before implementing PFML compensation. Married employees that work for the same company. Federal law requires such married employees split the 12-week entitlement, and PFML makes no mention of that. Would the county be required to give each parent 12 weeks of leave? And then lastly, is there a lifetime max or other kind of cap on claims or amount of leave taken? So we just need some clarity is what, yeah. We really need to talk, I think, to the sponsor.
Commissioner Olivas.
So I've been in good communication with the sponsor, and I think Commissioner Barboa works on this as well. And actually, I feel really strongly, and, you know, you all may not believe me, but that all of these are addressed in the current version of the bill and actually addressed in the amendment already. Because I'll go through here and kind of address them one by one. The one position that I just feel like we cannot take, the one point that I'll just kind of say, I don't agree with, and I don't think the bill does either, is opting out local governments because that basically sets a precedent to say, small businesses, everybody else, you do it, but we're not going to do it. And I don't believe that that's a good way to implement the policy. And I believe it's a good policy, and I believe if everybody does it, it will work very well. So I'm not really interested in that one. For waivers for, so sick leave plus FML plus EML, that is addressed in number three. This is avoids potential conflicts with federal FMLA and State Paid Sick Leave Act. And actually, I'm not sure if you all got this handout from, I think, I'm not sure who sent this up here, but can an employee use PFML on top of sick leave? No. And then it goes into a description of why they cannot. And it also talks about FML and other things like that. As far as the use of this to get six months or a year in a row off. Also, again, there is a limit on the total amount of leave allowable over a one-year rolling period. So it's a rolling period, so we're, and again, the state is managing this. This is not on employers to track this. If you're in the state program, if you opt out and you're doing your own program, different story. But that rolling average is going to limit a lot of those conflicts. And then on the issue of waivers for family mem, who is a family member, who qualifies, that sort of thing. One of the things that's addressed in here that I think is really important in the bill is that this is determined by a doctor, not by an employer. And, you know, we can think of other instances where we don't want employers or politicians or anyone else making healthcare decisions for people. And this is a similar instance in that, you know, if a doctor says that, you know, there's something that qualifies you for this, and the state will make these rules that say what qualifies, what conditions, what instances. But I think that, you know, we trust doctors to make a lot of weighty decisions on behalf of their patients and on behalf of the public, and I trust that they can make these decisions for their patients and that the employer should be pretty much the last person making those decisions because that's a very different relationship. So I really feel like we're on board with basically everything that you're saying, other than the local opt-out. I think it's already in there, and I think it speaks to, as Commissioner Barboa said, the need for way more communication with the sponsors and the people working on this bill because it seems like we're kind of in a, everybody's in their corner, and nobody's talking. And like the bill that I'm reading and what I'm hearing about it is very different than what's being said here. And I think we just need to get people together to talk and understand. And there have been some changes made in the new bill that's running this year that I think, yeah, again, address many of these concerns. And I think that this statement, that I worked with Jason Weeks to draft this statement, to offer some of these protections to the county, but not just to the county, frankly, for all employers.
Madam Chair? Just real quick, I just wanted to say, you know, respectfully, I just, again, just wearing my administrator, my administrator hat and just want to make sure that we're able to provide, you know, public safety at the MDC. That's where we have the, I think, the main issue, right, interim warden? It's, is it, it is at the MDC, and I just have to make sure our services are uninterrupted, and I have to maintain the integrity of our budget. So that's where I'm coming from. But as far as, you know, as, you know, just being supportive of our staff and offering them benefits that they deserve, I really think that the county is on board. And we, I think it would be okay for us to say, to opt out of it because we already offer a very generous benefits package. So, but whatever you decide we do, we do, and we move forward. And, and again, I just respectfully just wanted to bring that to your attention. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
County Manager, I just want to make sure that I, sometimes I feel like I say stuff, and maybe I'm not totally heard. Like, the current policy, and I would, I wish our lobbyists were here so that they could maybe address it. We should ask them to be here next time. But, right, the current policy says that if you have equal or better, you can opt out, period. It already says that. So there is no need to do anything other than if we, and I, like I said, I put all my money down that I bet we offer better because this is a low bar that advocates in our Senate are asking for. So if we already, like you said, already pay 1.7 million in our paid family medical leave at MDC, I would expect that that wouldn't change because we're already offering better than what this policy that is meant to really help providers that don't have, help employees that don't have good employers like the county. And I think actually all this, I almost feel like not even seconding this just because I feel like it's already in the policy. It's really clear here that the money doesn't come out directly. All of this is paid into a fund, right? Like a 0.05 per employee for the county, and the employee pays 0.04% into a fund that the state maintains. And so when that leave is required and there's safety nets, right? They must have a qualifying event and submit official documentation for a doctor's note for why they need to leave, right? Employers are only required to hold the position employee taking leave if the employee has been with the employer for at least 90 days. So somebody can't just come in and take advantage. The employer must have paid into the fund for at least six months prior to taking leave. And the bill prohibits employers from taking paid family medical and sick leave at the same time, which is one of your requests. And paid family medical is calculated on a rolling year. It doubles the size of DWS to relieve administrative burdens. So it, none of this, and that's why I feel like almost, I wish our lobbyists were here because if you're getting that information that it's going to further, when literally, this has been a multi-year project, right? That folks have been working to try and make right. And again, it disappoints me that, I don't want to hurt the county at all. And if I thought this was, I would actively be working against it. I think there's been lots of efforts to address exactly what you're talking about. And I, yeah, I don't, I don't mean to say that you're incorrect, but I also feel like I've been involved enough over the years that they've been trying to address those things to not harm. And so I just want to make sure you understand that because you said it again, right? That MDC or other places, those things have already been, are in the policy. And if I'm wrong, let's get our sponsors and our lobbyists together to. And if I'm wrong, let's get our sponsors and our lobbyists together to make sure what's real or, but yeah, I don't, I believe that those are already, and when we put the weight of the county behind it, like you say, we're the largest county, when we put the weight of the county behind it impacts the legislation largely, especially for smaller communities.
Thank you. More comments on this amendment?
If I may, I do want to, can I add something to this conversation, if I may? Mr. Jason Weeks has been working in the interim and reporting to us regularly. The fact of the matter is, is that until we actually see a filed piece of legislation, we don't actually know what the changes are. And, you know, basically the amendments that have been inserted into, I guess, this bill that will be introduced are not much different than what wound up at the end of the session, what ended at the end of the session. Secondly, opting out if you have equal or better, we don't. Nobody can match the kind of leave that this bill is requiring people to provide. We do offer paid ti-- not paid time off, we offered family leave, sick, you know, family medical leave, et cetera, et cetera. But in 12 weeks off when you have a baby, for example, but this is paid leave. And our analysis did show that in 2027, each of our employees will be burdened with an additional $714 in premiums per year. And that's only going to increase because this is going to go into deficit. So we're looking at, it is, even if it's a great policy, we're viewing this as an unfunded mandate or a mandate that's going to be funded by employer, employees such as the county's employees or any employee in the state of New Mexico. So our analysis showed 714 additional dollars going toward your health plan because we're required, everybody's required to, to put into this unless you do better, but we don't do better. We do, we do offer leave, but it's unpaid. This is paid. So nobody really offers a paid leave. FMLA does, but, so what we're considering, all of those things. And our lobbyists are working or tried, attempted to work with Senator Mimi Stewart, will continue to make those efforts, will continue to work with New Mexico counties and our fellow counties on this piece of legislation. That's always on the table. And it would be nice to be able to sit down and talk. I know Representative Marion Matthews is working on an alternative version that's a little less impactful. We haven't seen that either. And until we see these pieces of legislation and can really analyze them for what they are when they're introduced, we have to take a very cautious approach. We're going by what ended the session last year. Our analysis is based on that bill that ended the session. And until we see amendments officially introduced onto the record, you know, I think we're urging caution and, and absolutely more discussions with, with legislators or whomever, whomever we need to discuss these issues with. So, so I just wanted to add that. We, it's, it's, it's unfair to say that our lobbyists have not been working on the interim on this particular issue. They have, they've been informing County Manager and myself of progress, but there really hasn't been much, to be honest with you, to this point, which is why that, this particular piece of legislation was not part of the original draft that I submitted for your consideration. So just want to kind of give you that background where we're standing at today at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like I could ask a lot more questions.
I know.
Just let us go through. Because I, but yeah, if that, I don't, anyways.
We can, we can have further conversations. Madam Vice Chair, absolutely, and with our lobbyists included. At your, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we'll, County Manager? Yeah, no, I just wanted to, to thank you all Commissioners for just letting us have an opportunity to, to talk about it. And rest assured, yes, we will work with our lobbyists and with the sponsor of the bill and, you know, I, I have total respect for Senator Stewart. So we've always worked real well together, so. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
And I would just add that this question and answer, this frequently asked question was provided to us by the sponsor, by Senator Stewart. So I'm surprised that you don't have it or that Dan or Jason Weeks don't have it, but there, there are changes afoot. I mean, they are working with the communities and with the businesses and they know that, that this is an important community-wide, statewide decision.
So I'll call for the vote on the second amendment.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Castada?
Oh.
Commissioner Barboia, excuse me, Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes. Thank you. And Amendment Three?
Okay. Amendment Three, I think will be a lot less controversial. Last year, we saw in the session, unfortunately, there was a veto of many energy efficiency and really climate change related incentives to the state tax code. This is not something that I believe has a direct cost to the county necessarily, but it's a really important thing that we have to address to, to work and advocate for addressing climate change. So my, my final amendment, Amendment Three, is reorder and add Section 8B, Energy Efficiency and Carbon Reduction Initiatives, Support Efforts to Reform State Tax Incentives and Provide Incentives for Local Governments, Nonprofits, Businesses, and Residents as They Seek to Implement Policies and Practices That Improve Energy Efficiency and Reduce Carbon Emissions. So moved.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded, any questions? So, call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes. Thank you.
And we get back to the bill. Where are we? Sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the Administrative Resolution AR 2023-135 as amended?
So moved.
Second.
And seconded? All those in favor say, oh, roll call. Sorry.
Commissioner Olivas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Yes.
Madam Chair Baca?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your work, Kathy. Next is, let's see, well, we are U2. Yeah. Techable Improvement Program.
Hi again. So the second item in front of you this evening is a motion to approve an administrative resolution that supports the New Mexico County's 2024 legislative priorities. I attached to your packet, there, a document that outlines more detail about their priorities for this coming session. Unfortunately, I'm not involved in their decision-making, so they've asked all of us as counties to bring this before our boards, our, our county commissions for approval. And, and so that's what I've done and this is completely something that you all can decide whether to support or oppose. And I stand for any questions, I'm not sure that I can answer them though.
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a, a resolution number, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. This was on item 10B. We have AR 2023-136.
Great, thank you.
And Madam Chair, I believe that as you are all in person, you can go ahead and do a...
Show of hands. Okay. All those in favor say yes. Ms. Jan?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy. Economic Development. Marcos, things are all this deep.
Back again. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends the approval of the Inducement Resolution authorizing the Burnley County Commission to approve a LIDA application together with the State of New Mexico, City of Albuquerque pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and the Burnley County Local Economic Development Plan on behalf of Array Technologies. This specific request will be for Burnley County to authorize $250,000 for the, for the LIDA and the city will be providing 250,000 and the state will be providing 2.5 million. And this is for introduction only and we'll bring this back for final approval with the Array IRB at the second meeting in January. And I have my friends from the city and state again, and then members of, of the company as well.
Thank you for hanging in there with us this late evening. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, Madam Chair, that resolution is AR 2023-137.
And I move approval.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any questions for Marcos and his team?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to say thank you for the collaborative effort of all of our state and local economic development agencies on, on this, this one and so many others. And it just put a plug in also for that graphic that you put in the, the first one. It'd be great to start seeing that on all of these, making it just a lot easier to digest and understand the, the overall cost benefit on these things.
Will do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment, thank you for the briefing today, Marcos, the Director, Marcos. The, these, this technology is to be paired with the solar panels, that's correct. So excited, I would hope, and I don't, I didn't ask, I think, when you told me the, I know the previous, the Maxion included like workforce development, partnerships with C and M. Is there any, I think for these same technologies, I, I just hope that there's ways we could think about, you know, you know, getting our, our young people up and ready to be part of this, these expanding businesses.
I'm Madam Chair and Chair Barboia, I didn't mean Vice Chair Barboia. Been a long night. So yes, this company also is taking advantage of the job training incentive program where they'll be providing on-the-job training and training throughout the career and actually Array brought an individual who's actually gone through several different trainings and been able to move up through the company because of those trainings as well. So we, I thank you for giving up your evening to be here as well. But yes, that is very important to the company as well to have those training opportunities for their employees to be able to move up through the company.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. No further questions? No further questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it, thank you very much.
We're still here though.
We are too. And whenever you're ready.
Yes, sorry.
The next one, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the Economic Development Staff recommends authorizing the Burnley County Commission to approve the resolution in accordance with the Tax Increment Development Act dedicating percentages of the county gross receipt tax and a percentage of the county property tax generated within the Mesa del Sol TID districts numbers two through five for the financing of public infrastructure within the Mesa del Sol Tids numbers two through five in the same manner and amount as previously dedicated to Mesa del Sol Tid District Number One. A portion of tax increment dedicated to the district specifically for public infrastructure is separate and apart from any GRT share that has been discussed today with the, with the Maxion project. And just to provide a little of color, so this Tid District Number One, and the Tid was actually formed in the City of Albuquerque in 2006. The county joined Tid District Number One in 2008. The total of Mesa del Sol's Tid districts, one through five, is a little over 3,000 acres. And Tid District One is about 220, 226 acres. District Two is about 500 acres. District Three, 290 acres. District Four, 329 acres. And District Five, 260 acres. The Maxion Project will be activating Tid District Number Two. And there are several other projects that we're working on, hopefully bring before you all soon in that area as well. There is part of the development agreement between the City of Albuquerque and the developer. There is a development agreement for the city for workforce housing provision within the Tid as well.
I move approval. And I'll second that and, and may I have a, I'm sorry, I neglected to ask Madam Clerk for an AR resolution number.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The resolution number is AR 2023-138.
38, thank you. And, and Marcos, thank you for that specificity. This is a very large area and acreage and a large company. And so I would like to request staff to work on a contingency like the, the South Campus MOU to include affordable housing element on the county side of this agreement.
And Madam Chair, that's something that staff can work on. And I've already been talking to the developer about you're going to need to do some affordable housing and that's something that's on their mind, so we can help codify that into an MOU similar to what we did with the South Campus Tid.
Thank you, Marcos. That has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say yes.
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 And that passes. Thank you, Marcos, for your good work.
Thank you.
Item E, Fleet and Facilities Management. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, Madam Chair, that number is FR 2023-139.
Thank you. Chair.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jared Van, I'm the Director of Fleet and Facilities for Burnley County. The Fleet and Facilities Department would move to approve this financial resolution budgeting $14.2 million for our Energy Efficiency Improvement Project. We've consulted with an energy efficiency consultant company named Year Out and they have identified some significant opportunities for us to reduce our carbon footprint, our energy output, energy costs, and we have also found the opportunity to install some solar at a number of our facilities. These are 10 of our largest facilities throughout the county. This includes a 630 kilowatt array of solar across these facilities, upgrading 11,000 light fixtures to LED lighting, installation of some EV charge stations, and also addressing deferred maintenance items such as rebuilding of our air handler units and replacement of our boilers with high-efficiency boilers. We're looking at an overall cost of $14 million, but over the life of the project, we will save 18 and a half million dollars in energy. We're also going to reduce our carbon footprint by 83 million tons of carbon, which is about 315,000 pounds per month for the next 22 years. So we went from a size 12 carbon footprint down to a nine or so. It's 26% savings in energy and a 14% carbon reduction. So I move for approval for the County Manager to ward this contract off of the state pricing agreement and also any change orders that might come across during the duration of the project. Standard questions?
I'd like to move approval, man.
And I'll, I'll second that, thank you. We'll go on to for a size six next.
This is 10 of our, 10 of our buildings, we could do more.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, yes, Commissioner Olivas?
I just wanted to say, this is like one of the first things that, that I was introduced to in working with Jared and Elias's team and talking about sustainability and climate resiliency and climate impacts, reducing our impact. And so they brought me in on this early on, telling, telling me about the project, the analysis, the data that went into this, collecting data on those facilities, really doing a deep dive and, and making sure that, that we got this right. So this is not a scattershot approach, this is really surgical, looking at where can we get the biggest bang for our buck. And to me, this is a great way to use some of our fund balance to, not just to address maintenance issues and things that we're going to have to do anyway as part of our capital improvement plan, but make a huge carbon impact and put some people to work, plumbers, electricians, carpenters, people like that, that are going to be, you know, getting some jobs through the county through this investment in our facility. So, great job to Jared and Brian and Elias and your whole team. I love this project. Let's go for round two.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All those in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And we move on to item F. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, Madam Chair, item F is AR 2023-140.
Vice Chair Barboia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to invite my friends from our, our community partners from the Burnley County Health Equity Council to come up and be experts. So Marion, this brilliant young woman who's coming up and her partners from Health Equity Council brought this resolution to my attention. They worked hard with several of the state legislator sponsors, which included both senators and representatives, including Senator Sedia Lopez, who was here earlier. And they were able to pass this alcohol alleviation fund tax, you know, alcohol tax to create an alleviate alcohol alleviation, alleviate harm fund. Again, it's a fund that would provide the kind of, and they were able to work hard and get it passed all the way through the legislature only for the governor to veto it. But they are putting their organizing hats on and getting it passed across different counties and I'm proud to sponsor this at the county level. I will ask them to give, I'll give a little bit, the ordinance, the resolution is in front I will ask them to give, I'll give a little bit, the ordinance, the resolution is in front of you. And, you know, alcohol use disorder is a disease, right? This is, a lot of people still will put shame on it as if this is somebody's choice. And right now, we know that young people are greatly impacted, whether it's through their families or just because we live in a state where alcohol is so accessible and there's not much else for young people to do. And so even in this resolution, it states that, you know, most, in a statewide survey, majority of young people had had their first drink by the age of 13. This Alcohol Harms Alleviation Fund will be administered by the Department of Finance and Administration and appropriated by the New Mexico State Legislature to the Human Services Department, the Department of Health and Early Childhood Education, and Public Education Department and Higher Education Department for alcohol harms prevention, treatment, and recovery services to individuals throughout New Mexico, including on lands of Indian nations, tribes, and pueblos, and to individuals harmed by a person in need of those services. So I want to, there's more here. Hopefully you've been able to read it, support it. But I wanted to give the floor to Marion, who I've been able to work closely with than any of the other health equity folks.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, thank you for considering passing this resolution. So everyone is impacted by alcohol-related harms, whether directly or indirectly. We pay for it one way or another. So New Mexico is number one in the nation for alcohol-related deaths. So recognition of this dire issue that we are losing fellow New Mexicans to is a positive step in combating it.
Madam Chair and Vice Chair Barboa, I, my name is Cindy Sockerman. I was, I spoke a little bit earlier, but I made it. So I think in general, I just want to thank you for considering this and, and actually acknowledging that it is, it's a chronic disease, right? It's not an easy choice, and we need to provide treatment, and we need to provide medication-assisted treatment so that people can focus on other areas of their lives with the assistance that they need. In general, I am an evaluator. I see the data on an ongoing basis. I conduct focus groups and I talk to community members across our state that are impacted. And I can also tell you stories and the many times that they have tried to, to stop the substance use. I work in areas where there's outlet density. They're over capacity, over quota. And there's nothing that the cities or the counties can do in those areas. And so I just want to thank you for considering the resolution. And I'll pass it on to her again.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Enrique Cordell with the Health Equity Council. And this is important because often we will hear people say, well, you're putting a tax on alcohol and that's going to hurt people who make the least amount of money. But it's going to provide services for the folks who have the least amount of money. Those are the people who will benefit the most, the people who get to that point where they decide it's time for me to change, it's time for me to get better. They will have access because at this point, a lot of people can't afford services for that. And so we're just trying to follow some evidence that shows that this is helpful. It also decreases the amount of people starting alcohol. Just the small amount of taxation makes that difference. And so we think this is a large impact for a small investment, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
And again, thank you to this team for bringing this to my attention. I'm honored to sponsor this locally and ask for my colleague's support.
It's been moved and seconded.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Elias.
I just wanted to thank you folks for being here and advocating for, for our community and the folks impacted so negatively by, by alcohol and all of the diseases and harms that comes with alcoholism and the accessory health problems. And yeah, just like I was talking about the electric vehicle stuff, this is a very different thing, a much more personal thing, you know, life and death thing. But it was another disappointment last year to see another impactful, important piece of legislation that some folks worked so hard to, to get through the legislature, like yourselves, to see it not make it through the governor's pen was, was really discouraging. But I'm so encouraged that you all are back again this year, and we're going to go again and go harder. And I'm just proud to support this because it's so important that we make an incentive to, to use alcohol less, or not at all, hopefully, and, and invest in people that need that kind of treatment and the resources to abate those harms.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for your patience to me.
Item G, Metropolitan Detention Center. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item G is FR 2023-141.
Welcome. Acting Warren Otero.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. The motion is to approve one-time appropriation for the purchase of two new solder full-body contraband scanners for MDC in the amount of $410,000. These new scanners are the latest technology software that's out there in body scanners. This will assist us in detecting contraband at the facility and drugs, which will prevent and hopefully defer bringing in those items into the secure perimeter, into the facility. The new technology is called Thea, and it's a full-body scanner with automatic threat recognition software, software of it today. So what it does is, once it scans the body, it'll recognize where the contraband is in, in the, on the person. And it'll actually highlight it and identify it on the person. So this is the newest software. I think it's something that would be helpful to us at the facility and to prevent, as I said, the introduction of that contraband. It's, it has artificial intelligence, so it learns, so it has a database of which it has thousands of records of what a clear scan looks like. So if it detects something that is out of that normal scan, then it alerts the officers to that or alerts us to that there might be contraband in there. These new battery scanners, it's already an existing contract that we have that we'll be getting the services from and purchasing the new scanners. This will come out of the general fund, and we are requesting the Board of County Commissioners to approve the financial resolution to appropriate funding to be used to purchase the two new solder body scanners at MDC. And I stand for any questions at this time.
Commissioner Elias.
I just wanted to, you know, I pulled this to ask a couple of questions and make a couple of statements about it. Overall, you know, I think this is, this is good. This is something that can help reduce overdose deaths happening in jail because contraband's getting in and, you know, people are dying because of that. So this is, you know, using technology and the best available technology to, to make a difference in that, save lives and make the facility safer. One question I had, because it's, one thing that kind of confused me about the language of this is this mentions the public health order that the governor issued a couple of months ago regards to gun violence, public health around drug use and behavioral health. But I, I was kind of confused. When I saw that, I thought this was maybe appropriating some grant money or something like that from the state through that order to this, but I, I don't think that's actually what's happening here. But I'm just kind of wondering if we pursued that option with the state to, to say, you know, this is, this is a, a public health issue and this is part of the public health order in keeping people safe. And, you know, like how you mentioned in here too, this will improve the processing times for intake. So getting cops back on the street and deputies back in their cars working the streets versus waiting at MDC. Did we, did we try that approach?
We're, we're under those conversations right now so that we can get the funding. We have the need for this equipment. So that is something that we have talked to the state about in getting funds. So we would just be reimbursed for that.
Okay, great. Because I think it's really important, and I'd love to see them step up and, you know, put their money where their mouth is. And if, if you want to help with this, with this issue and make our intake process faster, hey, here's, here's a great way to help. And, and with that being said, if they, if they step up and do something like that, frankly regardless, I hope we can also invest some money at some point in time in the sort of rehabilitation side of the facility and not just the, you know, criminal and, and sort of hardening the entries. This is important, this is critical. But making sure that we have programs in our jails that support people when they get out, because they will get out at some point, whether it's a day or a year or a month. So, you know, I know that I've had conversations about this. Staffing challenges make this always a tricky issue. But getting things like civics programs in the jail, you know, getting some, some light educational, you know, it's, it's important that, that I think that we start to invest in the purpose after jail, right? What, what is the purpose that, that individuals are going to find in their life after they leave there? For some, they may not need that. They, they may have just messed up one time and they'll be okay. But for a lot of folks in there, I think, you know, it's about building purpose, building community, investing. And so I just wanted to make the comment that I hope we don't just always invest in, you know, scanners and weaponry and, you know, bars, but, but also invest in minds and bodies and hearts.
Thank you, Commissioner Elias. And to that point, you know, we are open to programming at the facility. And, and we do work very closely with Behavioral Health and RAPR on services and with the RRC and discharge planning. You know, not getting too far off track, but we do have some, some exciting, you know, new programs there at the facility. And I, I'd be happy to share that information with you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Intermaordin Otero. Great to see you again. Thank you for being here all night with us. I, and actually, just to Commissioner Elias's point, I was speaking to a community advocate that said they met with you about trying to get civic programs into the jail, that you were open to that discussion. So thank you for being open to those things. I support this because I think, I'm glad that you would have, that it was finally believed when you and him said that there is a lot going on and contraband's entering the jail. At the CJCC meeting, some folks had went and did a tour of the jail, and they had noted, I believe it was you, or I'm not sure who took them through, but I believe they had noted that they thought that was one of the weaker, weak points is our intake there, that there was a third party and that maybe our technology wasn't up to date. I don't want to, I wasn't part of that working group, so I'm not going to hold you to any of that. But it feels like this is a good opportunity to address that part that even sort of public eyes had noticed as maybe one of the weak points that might be letting contraband come into the jail. I see on the financial analysis form that there's a training at startup that just says like $3,000 total. I just, I would, if that's what y'all are estimating, then I support it. I just wonder, because like right now, and I'm not meaning to put this on you, but our YSC Center has a similar kind of body scan, and I'm not exactly sure why it's not being fully utilized. But I've been told, right, that there was problems about train, not everyone having the training needing to use, utilize it, and that capacity was a reason. So I just, if, if $3,000 is enough to make sure everybody gets trained that needs to, that's going to be running intake, that, I just, that sort of triggered me to think about. I want to make sure everybody's trained and that it's utilized.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. So we, with the training, usually we do train the trainers as well, so that saves us in costs. So we'll have train the trainer, and then we train our additional staff in that to get that done.
Thank you. I think this, I totally support this. I think this is going to help. And I think for maybe even a lower price, because there's not as many people in our YSC Center that I would love for us to look at the same equipment for pre-adjudicated youth in our, in our youth detention facility.
So we, there has been some discussions with YSC and us maybe taking our current equipment and placing it at YSC. So they, we can reuse that. So I am reaching out to them, and they did reach out to me. So we, we're trying to figure it out to where would they take, we, if we get the funding for this, that we'll move the scanners that we currently have and we'll place them at YSC.
Thank you. Otherwise, I support this. I, I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
On to item 11, approvals, human resources. Chief Perez.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. On behalf of the Department of Behavioral Health Services, Human Resources is seeking a commission approval to create 10 new full-time substance abuse technician positions for the care campus. As you are aware, the care campus provides a continuum of care services, including central intake to centralize the intake location and process, observation and assessment to observe and determine the level of care needed, social model detoxification services for individuals struggling with substance use disorder, crisis stabilization unit for individuals struggling with behavioral health issues and in need of stabilization following an initial encounter with psychological services, a living room program for individuals needing a comfortable and living environment to meet with a certified peer support worker to gain access to resources such as housing, computer, treatment, snacks, and water, an outpatient clinical for services post-discharge for medication-assisted treatment, and a supportive aftercare community for individuals in need of a sober living environment while they transition back into the community post-detox services. The Department of Behavioral Health Services recently created a staffing capacity plan to ensure the safety and security of clients and staff to ensure on-demand services are met. These new positions will be funded by existing and recurring grant funding through the state of New Mexico Behavioral Health Services through falling colors. I think it's also important to note that Human Resources is working with the department to also create 16 new term with benefit substance abuse technician positions that will also be dedicated to the care campus. And I will defer to Chief Perez in the event he has anything else to add and to answer any questions that the commission may have related to the request.
I stand for any questions.
You're a good team. Vice Chair Barboa.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Oh.
Thank you for bringing this forward. Obviously, we need, I know that we've had vacancies, but this is just a reorganization, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, so what we've done is gone through the last three months and really evaluated how the staffing levels are at the care campus, knowing that our greatest need is boots on the ground, which is the substance care technician position, which, as you know, when we're low, it results in us having to turn people away. So I'm happy to announce that we only have five vacancies right now in the substance abuse technician spot. I wouldn't ask you for more positions if I didn't know, one, that I could fill them, and two, that they were definitely needed. And I can tell you both of those things tonight with absolute confidence. I can fill them, and they're needed. Anytime we can have more substance abuse techs on, it helps with our ratio of client to provider, which is right now based off of CARF accreditation, 15 to one. So if you do the math there in our outpatient, if I could put two care techs inside of that facility, I can bring that number up from 15 to 30, just by that simple, that simple amount of math. So if you take that and you, you multiply it across the entire campus, the positions that we're asking for are definitely going to be utilized, and they'll be utilized quickly. So, hope that answers that.
Completely. Thank you so much. Thank you for thoughtfulness. I love to see the flip. I know when I came in, I was like, oh, we have so many of these high-level positions. But if we don't have the positions that are like, you said, boots on the ground, the field, then they're never getting in to actually meet with that high-level clinical psychologist because nobody's actually been the trusted person to bring them in.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I would add too that we do still have a number of vacancies in case management, caseworkers, those, those areas which we are working, you know, desperately to try to fill. These numbers also, which it's not in the, in the literature that was given to you, but it also is going towards our young adult program, that we've got all the construction done. It looks great. The, the paint is dry, the furniture's in, and we're ready to open. We're just putting our fine tuning on the programming. But some of these positions will actually go towards that because now basically what we're doing is taking individuals from our, our traditional detox floor that are between the ages of 18 and 25 and moving them upstairs into an area that is all their own with 30-day program. And we can't do that with the staffing that we have today. So built into this number and the number that Bernadette alluded to, the 16, is part of that youth, young adult section as well. So just so you kind of get a clear picture of what's happening on the care campus.
Thank you. And I have no other questions. I fully support this. Thank you for bringing me.
Commissioner Elias.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, I was, I think my questions were right along the same lines as Commissioner Barboa's about same lines as Commissioner Barbo's about, because, you know, we hear different things at different times about staffing there. And so, I was looking at this and saying, are we just adding positions to say that we added positions, but, you know, we just doubled our vacancy rate kind of thing. But if we're, you know, basically close to fully staffed and, and these can actually be filled, that's, that's a different story. So, that's huge. And then, you know, my, my reading of this, understanding is that this is primarily funded through state grant funding. So, this, obviously, that's not a certain thing forever. And, and so I know there's some language in there about, you know, behavioral health initiative and things like that. They, they could backfill this if that goes away at some point. But for now, this is state funding that we're looking at.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Levas, yeah, and, and that is, it's solid. The funding that we've been utilizing, the lekser, liquor, liquor excise tax money, we have not had an issue with that in the, in the past. However, Shirley Reagan being, being as brilliant as she is and always looking out for the, the betterment of the county, made sure that we do have a backup plan in the event, rare, rare event, that something was to happen with that liquor excise tax, these positions could be absorbed into the behavioral health initiative. So, it's, it's back to what we always hear is we always have this money out in the behavioral health world. Well, part of it is for something like this, where it just kind of floats and carries over anticipating, you know, the day that comes that we may not have access to that liquor excise tax. We can still keep these services going as Burnley County on our behavioral health initiative. So, that's been looked at and, and examined through Shirley and her team, and we feel confident there.
And hopefully, we, if we, if we work with our friends in the back and, and at the state legislature, we can grow the alcohol tax remediation fund and, and make sure that it's even more of a, a stable revenue source. But in the meantime, just great work and glad to see that, that we're looking at expanding that resource for our community.
And, Madam Chair and Commissioner Levas, I will say, I just want to be very transparent, that we do have a number of vacant positions still. So, if you look at the position vacancy report, you are going to see a number of vacancies. But what we're talking about specifically tonight are the substance abuse techs, which are those boots on the ground that are providing that 24 by 7 service to those coming in for detox or observation and assessment. So, I just want to be very transparent there because it, there are still a number of positions that are vacant. But we have taken a large number of the higher level positions with help from Bernadette's group and re, repurposed those and have put them, reorganized them into these to help kind of offset some of that funding. I think we were able to take care of about 10 of them just by doing reorganization of some of those higher level positions that we determined were not necessary at this point, trying again to get those, those boots on the ground first contact, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. And all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12, discussion finance, American Rescue Plan at ARPA.
Denise Benavides. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Denise Benavides. I'm the principal financial analyst for the finance division. So, on October 24th, the county commission requested the county manager to begin analyzing the feasibility of four projects totaling $5 million. The following is an update of those projects in addition to the status of two of the projects were also approved that day. So, the four projects that we're looking at are the Gateway Center, the Burnley County Early Learning Facility at 900 Armijo, that's currently where PB&J is housed, the Urban Agriculture and Open Space, and then the Transitional Housing Pilot Project. So, really quickly, just some brief updates. The Gateway Center Housing Navigation Center, we did receive the program proposal from the city on November 21st. The ARPA team has done the analysis and then the presentation to the core team for review is going to happen at the December 14th meeting. And then based on their recommendation, we'll bring that forward most likely on January 9th. For the Transitional Housing Pilot Project Program, that one, we did send out a letter to the city on November 15th, asking them to provide that proposal. We did receive several correspondence from the city that they were still kind of identifying land and space and how they were going to move forward as well as the cost of those homes. So, an update was received on December 6th, expressing the need for a little bit more time to look at the infrastructure, design costs for those modular units. So, the analysis has not been completed. And dependent on the timeline of the project, based on when they're able to get all those costs, it may not meet the ARPA deadline. So, we may, we will have to come back and look for you for more direction. The Burnley County Early Learning Facility, that's located at 900 Armijo, that was sent out. We did send out a, a request for a proposal to facilities on November 28th. That proposal was due December 12th. We actually received it on the 7th. So, we were able to begin our analysis for that one. We are planning on to present that one as well to the core team at the December 14th meeting. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring you that one on January 9th based on their recommendation. Finally, the Urban Agriculture and Open Space, that we did send out a proposal letter, and I apologize, it wasn't to facilities, it was actually to the PROS department. That proposal was due December 5th for us to begin analysis. However, we did not get that proposal back yet. They're still working on it. I think they've looked at identifying some properties that they're looking to purchase as part of the open space. I believe they're in your district, Commissioner Barboa. So, they're still working out and they're working on their due diligence. So, hopefully, we'll have a better update in, in a few weeks. And I will stand for questions on those projects before I move on to the next two.
I have a question. So, my understanding, so, thank you very much, by the way, for doing this analysis, reaching out to our partners. It's, it's so important that, that we do this. We know that time is of the essence. And so, this work really will help. So, all of these that you've spoken about, they will be coming back with an answer, yes or no, whether it fits the ARPA signature, the qualification requirements. And on January 9th, that is when the approval by this board body occurs?
So, we, Madam Chair, we currently have two that we've received proposals that we've been able to do analysis on. Those will be presented to the core team first for their recommendation. And regardless of whether they recommend approval, or they recommend an alternative, or they recommend not to move forward, those will be, those two specifically will most likely be back on January 9th. As far as the other two, as soon as we get the proposal, we'll start those analysis. It'll have to go in front of the core team. So, depending on when that next core team meeting, but most definitely, yes, those will come back to this board for whatever the recommendation was, regardless of whether it's for approval or, or for, you know, an alternative, or, you know, we're not going to move forward.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Question, Commissioner Levas?
Not a question, just a compliment to, to you and to Shirley and county manager for, for following up on this and doing it quickly and, you know, not, not making us like go to you asking, hey, what's going on with this, this stuff? Can you give me an update? It's just really nice to see it happening. And, and thank you for, for your work on this and looking to see what you find as, as this moves through the process and, and see where these land in January.
Thank you. Vice Chair Barbo.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, the Transitional Housing Pilot Project, that's in partnership with the city. Do you know, I believe I talked to Commissioner O'Malley a little bit about, that's the pallet homes. And I believe that they were looking at that property across from Jack and Jill Park. Do you know this, that those details are not in there yet?
No, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, we did not receive that level of detail. So, we did receive that they were looking at more time. They were trying to identify land and, and space where they were, can do it and how they were going to move forward with that. So, we don't have that level of detail. Sounds like you have a little bit more information than we do. So, we can reach back out to them and, and see where they're at. But as of December 6th, they didn't have like anything for us to analyze.
And I fully support it. And I think our community, I know that our communities do too. I've heard it. I just don't want us to be, I, I have a little bit of trauma with the city from when we did the, the VA Transitional Living Center, just that I wanted them to do the community process. We already had the zoning, we already had the funding, and the project was good to go. But, you know, that commu, community process that we're, should be committed to, or that the city should be committed to, was not followed. And that was hard. So, I just hope that if, if there's a way to make sure that we include that in that maybe so that the city follows their own process, or if we can be a part in making sure community process is involved in that. I know, I, I, if I believe it's the same one, I, I know our community is longing for it in that area. But anyways, I hope we can, if there's a way to do that. And the open agriculture, if they, I just want to make sure because I don't want to miss out on the opportunity. So, our staff's going to get, you're just saying you haven't seen it yet, but you've heard that it's coming.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, absolutely. So, first, to answer your first question, we will most definitely make sure that is part of our analysis, that we make sure that that community engagement piece is in there. Second of all, the, the department, we did have several, we've had several meetings going on and on with PROS to identify the two projects. I believe one initially was at the Marble Open Space, but that one already had him, went and moved forward. So, this is kind of a new kind of idea that they had for the open space. And so, I know that in talking with John Barney, he had, he did say that they had identified two lots, I believe, on Virginia that they're, they're looking at. And they're working, I know that he's been working with real estate, doing their due diligence. I know that it, it's supposed to go to the real estate committee. So, there's a lot of moving parts in there. And as soon as we get all that information, I'm hopeful that we're going to get a proposal fairly soon. And then we can begin that analysis as well.
Great. Thank you. I just don't want us to miss out on that. And thank you. I think, you know, Gateway Center is also in my district, and I hope they get their stuff together so we can support that. Thank you. Thanks for all this work.
Of course.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, to, to tell you, I, I went to tour the Gateway Center about two weeks ago. They've really made some significant progress. And there were a lot of people that they were serving. So, I just wanted to pass that along. They're doing a good job. They're doing the best they can.
Thank you. And thanks for you supporting the funding for that.
Thank you.
So, finally, I just want to give, I know that you had asked for an update, and there was two projects that actually got approved at that same meeting. So, the first one is the Los Placinos Community Center addition and renovation. That, we did meet with the PROS department. They're currently in the programming phase. They're anticipated to begin the design completion about August 2024. So, it's bumping us right up into our, our ARPA deadline of December 31st of '24. And then they're anticipated to do an RFB September 2024. So, this is really crucial, you know, that they are able to get this done in the time that, because once December 31st, 2024 hits, we won't be able to obligate any more funds. So, we've been keeping in close contact with them to make sure, we meet with them monthly to make sure that the prog, the progress of all of the ARPA projects that they're in charge of is moving forward.
Great.
Does anybody have any questions about that one?
No.
Great. And finally, we have the 954 Street, the senior housing building purchase, that was approved. So, after that meeting, we started internal meetings, county internal meetings. And that was to discuss the progress of the first floor build out, what that was going to look like cost-wise, what the programming was going to look like. So, we had several attendees. You can see the list of attendees. And we have had several meetings. And so, right now, they are still working on the funding for the cost of the build out and program, and how the programming and what that's need is going to be and how that's going to be identified. Does anybody have any questions on that one?
So, when will, when will we hear back from you on that one?
So, since that one was already approved, it, it's really, we can, we can do it informally. We can give you updates on a regular basis if that's what you choose. Or if you want us to come back in front of the commission, we'd be happy to do so.
Just as long as we keep, keep in close touch. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say thank you again for this. And just to plug in, county manager, yesterday as we were talking about the dilapidated buildings in my, put it back on that pretty picture.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I just, this is like, you know, this is a dream. I'm so glad we're moving to get it. It's a beautiful building, both on the outside and the interior and, you know, all the dilapidated buildings and, and old apartments in my district that could use this kind of lovely retouch. So, excited that this is happening and hope it can happen for my district too.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to just use that as an opportunity to thank the manager and fittingly tonight, our departing county ma, deputy county manager, Enrico, and Chief Perez, because this is all kind of in their, their vision. And, you know, we got the opportunity, Commissioner Baca and I toured this with, with that group. And, you know, it wouldn't be possible without their vision and their work. So, that's all. Thank you.
Just got to make it happen.
Thank you.
And now, RB, Planning and Development Services Director Nick Hamm, come on down.
All right, Madam Chair, Commissioners, hello again. Commissioner Levas, at some time ago, expressed an interest in having a short presentation about the county's zone change process and how that functions. So, I'm here to do that. And it's getting late. So, I'm going to try and strike that balance between informative and brief, if you all don't mind. So, I think I should start first with the criteria. The zoning code includes Resolution 11686. It's the decision-making criteria that the county has adopted and uses for changes to existing zoning and approval of special use permits. The gist of that resolution is such that changes to zoning occur when it facilitates health, safety and welfare, when it's not in significant conflict with adopted planning documents, that it's not motivated by financial considerations, that it doesn't create spot or strip zoning. And that, the thrust of that is generally to, to facilitate the, the needs of the community in a way that does not harm folks and does not do so in a way where it's captured by financial consideration. There are nuances to that, obviously. And the resolution, it includes items A through J. It's the appendix to the zoning code. And if any of you want me to dive deeper into that, I'm happy to do that. So, that's the criteria. The process is such that the county receives an application, it's vetted by staff, it's then, it enters the notification process, which starts with the applicant. So, the applicant has to write a letter to two representatives from the neighborhood associations within the area which the request occurs. It says, I'm this person, I want to do this on this property, and here's why. The second mode of notification is a sign goes up on the property. You'll be familiar with the orange signs that are associated with this. Those have to go up 15 days before and after a proceeding is convened. A mailing is done by the department that notifies folks of a public hearing, and we post a legal advertisement in the journal. All of this occurs prior to the hearing. The goal here is to use a number of means for outreach to get in touch with folks that might have an interest in the thing that the county is going to consider. Those requests are reviewed by staff. We make a recommendation through the context and the prism of that resolution that I mentioned. It goes to the county planning commission for their deliberation. They consider the request and they make a recommendation to you all. So, staff recommends to the planning commission, they make a recommendation to you. In instances of a denial, and I'll just point everyone's attention to this sort of flow chart here. This is a document that is in the county's zone change application. So, it's publicly available. This is not something that's proprietary or developed for tonight. This is a, a public resource that we've used for a number of years. The county planning commission this year, if it is a denial and there's no appeal filed, that's the end of the road. That application essentially dies on the line. If it's recommended to be approved and there's no action of appeal from the county planning commission level, that gets placed on your consent agenda. The language in the zoning code is such that you all are to sustain the recommendation of the planning commission unless someone files an appeal. So, those, in those instances where the application's complete, the public has been noticed appropriately, the planning commission finds that it meets the criteria for approval, and no one from the public informs the county of them being aggrieved through an appeal, that gets placed on your consent agenda and you act on it as you would accordingly. When it gets more input, I guess is how I'd put that, is when we do get an appeal. So, in the case of either denial recommendation or an appeal, and an appeal is filed, you all convene in a public hearing. And that's the point of your zoning agendas, you know, among other things. But that's where we place those items. So, I think, if I can just speculate a little bit, Commissioner, I think that the concern was that a particular zone change might have come forward and there was concern from the community and that they didn't have an opportunity to get in front of you all to make their case. The opportunity presents itself in the form of an appeal. So, there's a difference between, I don't love this decision and I'm aggrieved enough to file an appeal. That's when it really engages the community voice in front of you all as far as a public hearing goes. These are very structured. There's rules of procedure around the way that you all conduct those hearings. You know, Madam Chair, whoever's convening that hearing reads the rules of procedure and prescribes time limits and all the things that are associated with that. And a lot of the language in the county zoning code is informed by just the And a lot of the language in the county zoning code is informed by just the legal history that land use cases are taking in the state. So, these can and have the potential to be very expensive for municipalities if they act inappropriately, or if they make arbitrary and capricious decisions. But the county's code is informed by that. We, when we drafted the most recent amendments to this, which was many years ago, it was done with, in consultation with some of the most, in my opinion, sophisticated land use attorneys in the state, Bob White amongst those, Randy Audio, Michael Garcia, other folks at County Legal. So, what we are left with is a very well-crafted section of the zoning ordinance that speaks to the process by which the county will consider changes to entitlement. At that point, I think it's appropriate for me to stand for questions and see if you all have anything that you want me to delve into deeper, but beyond that, that's Zone Change 101, more or less.
Mr. Levas? Yeah, thank you for the quick, you know, 10,000-foot view really of how this all works and why it works the way it works, and I think we're safe at this point with kind of the specific case to talk about it. And frankly, the folks that were aggrieved by this were really professional about it, and that they waited the appropriate periods of time to talk to me about it and express their concerns. They didn't file an appeal because they looked at the criteria and said, we don't feel like we have grounds for an appeal, and we're not going to waste your time on that because of the way that this is drafted. And so, I think that was really thoughtful of them, and really the request that they made of me and of the commission is to take a look at the process overall, and this is kind of my start of that, taking a look at this and asking some questions about it. And I think where they were led astray, or where they felt let down was, you know, in looking at this flow chart, Neighborhood Association Notification, these neighborhoods were notified, they showed up and made comment at the Planning Commission meeting and felt like that wasn't considered, or that they were treated in a way where they were treated somewhat disrespectfully maybe, and I'm not sure if that happened. I did not watch that hearing. I'm not sure what happened that they're aggrieved about, and I need to do that. But I think my question is just sort of, if you can comment on that, about how, because I know, I just asked the question about the food truck thing, and we have a fine line between, you know, giving neighbors who don't have any financial interest in a property, they don't own the property, and giving them veto authority over something, that's really kind of unfair to the property owner. But at the same time, when you're talking about a zone change, and you purchased a property thinking that this property was agricultural zoning, and then it gets changed to commercial zoning, you know, you kind of are playing with the entitlements of others because, you know, those changes do affect neighboring property owners. So, there's a fine line to walk, and I guess I'm just wondering how we balance that.
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioner Levas, well, I think balancing that is the goal of the public hearing process. I'm going to speak pointedly about the proceeding in question. The community was notified, engaged, involved, had ample opportunity to express their sentiment. I personally spent a lot of time in phone calls and conversations with the folks that were part of that proceeding. I would push back on the characterization that they were ignored or not otherwise given attention or venue to express their thoughts. If I could opine just a bit there, I think that their fatal flaw was they brought opinion as opposed to evidence, which meaning that they expressed that they didn't like something, but they didn't back that up with something that could be weighed appropriately by the decision-making body. You know, people have different ideas about how land use should occur and the way that zoning should be approved or granted, and that's all well and good, but the hearing process is evidence-based, and it's based upon objective factors, considerations of physical context, the development of the area in question, traffic counts that are associated with this, I mean, things that are quantifiable. And then there's also the subjective, which is a bit more of the art part of this and more difficult to measure, but is done so in ways that can be considered through the county's decision-making attorney, the resolution in question. So, you know, and I'm not saying something I didn't share with those folks specifically. I mean, they asked me, what did we do wrong, or how could we have known better? And I think that the answer was that just showing up to a hearing and saying, I don't like this, is not necessarily enough to move the needle in a way that would be quantifiable for someone sitting on a planning commission, or sitting on a Board of County Commissioners making a land use decision. So, I, my personal thought is that we're not lacking in input. If anything, I think that, you know, myself and my staff, we could be more, I don't know, open to opposition about the process, which is also a difficult balance to strike, because we're not meant to take sides in that. I mean, we are overseer of a statute and ordinance-based process, and while we'll make recommendations against adopted criteria, we are designed not to have a dog in that fight. It is not that the county wants a zone change, or the county doesn't want a zone change, it's that the staff analyzes something and presents it to decision-makers, right? So, you know, I have always conducted myself in a manner of being open to areas that we can improve, and in particular, as I've had the honor to be the leader of the Planning and Development Services Department. So, in other words, I'm all ears if we think that we can improve this, but I will just say, in defense of the process, in defense of the folks that administer it, it is informed by years of experience, by people that are educated and experienced in the field itself, and are committed to providing a process that not only respects the minority voice, but actively courts it. We go to those folks and we see about their input. So, with that, I mean, I'm very much open to the conversation about how we might tinker with that, but in my honest opinion, I think it works pretty well. I'm going to knock on wood here, but we don't have a lot of zoning appeals in front of you all, and I think that's by design, and through the good work of the folks that work in the Planning Department.
All right, I think you and your team do a great job, and, you know, you do a great job leading the team and articulating a really thoughtful policy, and kind of like where we started the meeting tonight, we're ending it, and that it's important before you make decisions or make statements, like on air quality, that you get the facts and you understand the process first before you go and make assertions. And so, I think I, for one, have a much better understanding of how this works and why it works the way it works, and I think the advice that, you know, we should spread as commissioners and probably the department, everybody that can, to the public, the community on these hearings is show up with your facts.
And engage.
Show up with your studies and facts and things that are really, can be admissible to the process versus opinions that this is going to be bad, or that's an opinion versus why is it going to be bad? What proof do you have? And I think that the process allows for that, but it doesn't necessarily take in opinions, nor should it really. It needs to be based on facts, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate you bringing this so quickly to get us a little more educated on this.
Of course, happy to do so.
I want to thank you, Nick, for your endurance and your professionalism. I really appreciate you and your team.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, right back at you.
Madam Chair, and I know everybody's ready to go, but let's just keep going. I did want to, to the turn, also what we dealt with earlier this morning, or I just went through an ethics complaint and that whole process, which I feel like now I'm a pseudo-lawyer. I feel like all of our volunteers, who, all of our volunteers who are on that board have to be pseudo-lawyers to be able to perform that, and I feel a little bit, because these are, for the County Planning Commission, they're appointed, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's such a good opportunity. I know when I appointed Angelica Salades, that I'm proud to have appointed, because I think she's doing excellent. She has a planning background, right? And I think at the time, it may have been you or Enrico that told me that, I think she was the only planner at the time that was on the commission, on the County Planning Commission. So, it just brings to the, a little bit of that, like when we're like, oh, my best friend really wants to do good civic engagement work, and we get them on some of these boards. What kind of support is given to them as volunteers that make these, like, very legal, very important decisions? I know you, I trust in you all's expertise. What kind of support do they get? And then, second, to the point of, that I just went through this thing where I feel like I had to become a lawyer, and it took up so much of my life, the person who would, like, you know, if, I sort of went, the first time I went through the, this is my second run at an ethics company, the first time I just sort of went with like, okay, what do I got to do? I'm here, I didn't do a thing, right? And learned, and thankfully, it was dismissed the first time, but I learned the second time round that I better put more time and effort into this. So, I just worry sometimes about, you know, you're saying they're coming without evidence, but is there support? Because so much of this is like that legal language that you're like, I can't even read this.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboa, there is, in the form of the department makes, avails itself to all sides of this equation. You know, we have an obligation to process the application, but the other side of that coin, I think equally is important, is we have an obligation to the public to be informative and available, and to answer their questions, and to describe the means and the ways that they can engage this. And PDS is a customer service machine. We see 70 people a day at the front counter. We take in thousands of permits a month. We conduct hundreds of inspections a week. I mean, we are very forward-facing as far as community engagement goes. So, that is something that we are very comfortable with. It's something that we're very good at, and I would just say, as a broad statement to the public, as they're interested in these things, to let us know by any means available. Walk in, give us a call, send us an email, planning@burnco.gov. That goes to a number of staff in the department, and we answer those questions intra-day. To the dialogue about the Planning Commission, I'm very lucky right now. I have a very sophisticated and experienced version of the Planning Commission. We have folks that have been on this for, some of them decades, in various roles, both at the city and the county, folks that are educated, folks that are activists in the community, and are really, really curious and thoughtful about the things that they do there. So, thank you for your nominees. Thank you for your continued support of the work that they do, and as you all continue to work on these things, I would just tell you that I'm happy to provide briefings about anything that the Planning Department is working on, or that comes before the Planning Commission. You all should not engage with the community on a lot of these things because they are quasi-judicial in nature, but that's not to say that we can't get you relevant information for you all to make the best decision that you can.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Nick.
Thank you.
And finally, I will announce the next commission meeting, Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, here in the Kansas Sanchez Commission Chambers, and this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.